Regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom for section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. Tonight, we are going to be having a couple, more than a couple of public hearings in the meeting. There's going to be some procedural stuff we have to deal with related to those public hearings, so we're actually going to end up calling those twice. We'll talk about that when we get there, but if somebody would like to speak at the public hearing, well, even if you're not going to speak at the public hearing, make sure you hit the sign and sheet on the way in. And we'll talk about the time we're going to apportion when we get to the public hearing portion. So, moving down the agenda, we have public comments. Is anybody here for anything that is not on the agenda? Going once, going twice. Alright, moving on to minutes acceptance. We have minutes that were distributed to the planning board for acceptance. There were a couple of comments that were made in those minutes on the drive for connect, for correction.
Yep.
With that said, would somebody like to make a motion for acceptance of the minutes from the April 18th minute meeting?
Make the motion.
Hearing a first, do we have a second? No, second. Hearing a first and a second, discussion and corrections.
There's only one additional correction. I don't know if it's a correction here because it does not make much sense to me on item four. A, last sentence indicates his client and himself. Then ask the board to consider removing the three self-life.
I think it should say three-year shelf life.
Thank you. I thought that was, it's right up there. Thank you. I made that change in here and Patricia should get it.
Any other corrections? Alright, so the motion on the table is to accept the minutes with corrections as published in the drive, calling a vote.
Omen's aye.
Jack aye.
Demalia aye.
Stein aye.
And the chair is aye, the minutes are accepted. Moving down the list, we have new business. We have scenic road applications. Looks like we have two, 25 Lombard Road. Let's start with that one.
Tommy come in.
Yeah, sure. Come on up and tell us what you have going on and what you're trying to do.
Alright. So, I bought this land a couple of years ago. For bank purposes, I had the Form 11, all of that, because the bank required that down to it to build it a lot, all of that in order to buy it. So, recently, I sold my house in West Pennsyl, and when they started to working on my septic design engineering with the Form 11, he noticed that where they did their park test was an appropriate area. So, I reached out to the town, sent them what I had, and said, "We need to repark it because it's too far away from where the house is going to sit." So, Phil, who's great, he works for the Board of Health, he reached out immediately and said, "Let's repark it." He came out. So, discovering, no one said anything, it wasn't on a permit, and the engineer didn't think it was an issue because the bylaws says under 10 feet. We did 9.3 to do a soil test. So, by the, he recognized it. So, I had no idea. I just met Phil, Phil didn't say anything. So, here I am. We did the perk test, Phil signed off on it, great guy. And then, it was, he came down to do the permit. The engineer had called me and said, "Oh, they, they have an issue, something with the scenic road." He goes, "But, you're under that." I said, "Okay." So, here I am. So, Nancy helped me, you know, and then Patricia, which I guess is the person to help me get on the planning board, to get this moving, because I am homeless. I sold my house, I'm in a temporary living to build this house. So, I just want to move as fast as we can, because I didn't think there's going to be any issues. I guess there has to be a public hearing and all this, so it's delayed me by a month.
Yeah, did Patricia talk to you about the notice requirements for the hearing? Unfortunately, she was out yesterday and she was out today for important reasons, so we weren't able to catch up.
She told me you had one on May 20th, and that, you know, they have to do this process. So, I said, "Whatever I need to do, I need to move this along," because it's delayed me by, I already closed on the construction. I'm with the bank, Rollstone, yesterday, so the funding's there, my contracts are waiting. You know, I did all the permits, I did the permit for the driveway. The scenic, I came down and paid for it, because I would never do anything that's not. Did that. Septic, I guess they're meeting tomorrow to approve that, but I know Phil signed off on it. And I just looking forward to getting your help to move this forward.
Any, any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. It is, you've mentioned the septic, and is this, is this new septic, what's the impact of this new septic on your driveway? Because, I mean, what I'm reading here is the project description, we are proposing a driveway that will require removal of a portion of a stone wall. That, that's what, that's what's in front of us.
Well, it would already, it was already disturbed, like to sort of say, two years ago, they did a septic. I don't know who it was, it was Tim Norton from the town, he signed off on it, he was on the Board of Health. So, they had already done a septic, and that it was called to his attention that the stone wall shouldn't have been disturbed. But it was already kind of disturbed because they already did the perk tech too close to the road. It should never have been put there approved. So, that's when I reached out to you guys and say, to the town, I said, "Listen, I need to redo the perk test." Because it's not, it's not appropriate where they, assigned off on the septic design, or the Form 11, whatever. Wherever they per tested originally, wasn't in a good spot, engineer-wise, with the watershed and with the driveway. So, they, I just followed, they wanted me to come down, because it was, it was disturbed. And so, but, he's like, you know, it's, we did 9.37 and under 10 by the bylaws.
Sorry, 9.37 is what?
The, the, the linear feet that you can disturb by the, it says under 10 feet. And so, we did 9.3. But no one said anything. So, my point is, Phil said nothing, when I went to do the application, no one said to me, "Listen, that's a historic." Like, it probably should say it on that application, so people don't, because I would have said, "Oh, okay." We waited, and Phil reached out to me and said, "Can we do it Tuesday?" Because he knew that we were, we were looking to redesign it for the perk test. So, it was just, just a, I think it was just a reaction, and no one said, "Hey, that's a scenic wall."
I'm still, I'm still, I apologize to interrupt you here, but I'm just trying to understand the request that you have here. The request here is, is you're proposing a driveway that will require the removal of a portion of a stone wall. That's, that's all that's stated here, and, and that's fine.
But it's already removed, like, it's already disturbed, so that's going to stay, it's going to be a little bit further. There's no putting back the stone wall, is what I'm saying. They're going to have to remove more for the driveway, because they have to, because of that way the hill is, they have to do it on an angle that makes sense to go up to the house.
So, does this perk test and this septic have anything to do with this driveway? And the, and the additional disturbance that?
It does, because they're going to have to open the driveway a little bit, what they disturbed, and then they have to open up a little bit more for the driveway.
Because of where the septic now lies?
Correct.
That's why I wanted to.
Well, and because, and because they, the angle of the hill, they want it to disperse the driveway to more to the left, because it's too straight up, because it would, water would come down.
Alright, I have enough information. Thank you very much.
Alright, so in the, in the interest of time, so, yes, you submitted the correct application. You are correct, it does require a notice, it requires a public hearing. Typically, when we have the public hearings, we usually just ask questions, trying to determine, well, are you going to fail the minimum amount necessary to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish? And is it possible, is there any amount that can be put back once you do? So, as long as, I recommend you're just coming prepared with a short narrative to talk about that after there's publication of the hearing. And then, the board will make the decision at the hearing. Are there any other questions that you have for us?
What is that meeting?
So, it has to be, it has to be publicized for two weeks. And I think we talked about the 23rd is our next meeting. So, we could make it onto that agenda. Nate, if Patricia is not back tomorrow, is there somebody who can help cover getting publication done on this?
I can do it. It's only me and Bobby in on this side tomorrow, so I can just throw something together real quick. But, I'm anticipating her coming back, so.
Okay. Well, that should get you on the right track for getting publication done.
So, I just need a narrative for that time, do you need to provide it to that, or?
Yeah, it's better if you can send it to us ahead of time. The more supporting information you give us, the better. Because the, the application is asking for approximately 20 feet of stone wall. So, just make sure you give us some reasoning for that. Because our first question's going to be as well, it doesn't have to be that much, so.
Alright.
Thank you.
And reach out to Patricia tomorrow, and if you don't get her, reach out to Nate.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Ragged Hill Road. Do we have anybody here for that one?
I'm Doug Dronin with B2 Belvis. We filled an application for a driveway to remove a section of wall for a driveway for lot one on Ragged Hill Road. We had an NOI done and approved from the state, and they located the driveway for us at the minimum point of the wetlands. So, we've laid the driveway out, there's a small section of wall that, it's, it's a very small section of wall that it comes out of the ground, and it goes back into the ground. I don't know what, how a wall is defined by the board. But, you know, I filled the application anyway, I thought that I'd show you a picture of it, and if anybody's driven by it. But, we want to take about 20 feet of that wall, and just to get the driveway for us.
And Ragged Hill Road is listed, right?
Yes.
What street is it?
They don't, they don't give you that until.
Yes, right near, right next to me, across the street from the shop.
Okay, just state your name for the.
Sorry, Katie Young, bringing up. So, yeah, so my driveway, and then the new driveway that's already there, and then that sign is next. So, it's in between myself and the Browns.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, there is two pages of your application that are in the file, and I'm sure you just heard the previous discussion. Our, our land use clerk was not in yesterday and not in today. So, what, what we currently have for, in front of the board is just the two-page application. We need, as we discussed previously, we need it to be noticed, because we have to hold a public hearing about it. At the public hearing, we'll ask questions about whether or not you're removing the minimum amount necessary to accomplish the purpose. Since you're trying to, and if there's any mitigation steps that can be taken along the way. For the publication, essentially the same thing we talked about in the last one. It's got to be advertised as outlined in the application. And the office can help you meet the requirements for that. And the next meeting, where we already have a series of public hearings scheduled, is the 23rd.
Okay.
So, that would be, that would be a good day to do it. But, in order to make that happen, you gotta, you gotta work with the office tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And that, what does that intend?
It's, it has to be published in the two weeks perceived, going up to the, two days in the two weeks going up to the hearing. But the office can help you with the details on it.
Okay. And as far as like the mitigation goes, what is that?
If, if there's a portion of the wall that can be put back, or if the stones can be added to the wall in another place, or something like that.
Sure.
Stuff like that.
Sure.
Essentially, the, the whole purpose of the bylaw is to try to do the, the least impactful thing to stone walls and to trees along designated scenic roads. So, that's what all of our questions are going to be about.
Are you looking for a drawing for that, or?
Drawing, pictures, a narrative, anything you'd like to give us.
Okay. And that would be on the 23rd?
Yes. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so, we do have under new business, open space recreation plan. But I did suggest to those folks in an email that we hold that for 7:30. I think a lot of the same folks are here for, for the public hearings, and, plus some extra people, so I think I'll manage the room best. Alright, so, moving down the list. Just make sure I get the right language here. So, we did have an issue with the original service, or excuse me, with the original notice for the first public hearing, that we tried holding on this on the, on the 18th. So, what we're, what we're about to do is we're about to open that public hearing. And then, we're going to close that public hearing because of the procedural defect. And then, from there, we're going to open up a new public hearing to talk about the bylaw revision based upon the most recent publication. So, hopefully, everybody followed that. So, I am going to reopen the continued public hearing for the proposed agricultural accessory use bylaw, continued from the 18th of April. So, that, that public hearing is open, and I would actually like to ask somebody to make a motion to close the continued public hearing for the proposed agricultural accessory use bylaw due to issues with proper publication.
I will make that motion.
I will second that.
Hearing a first and a second, any discussion?
Sure. What does that mean? Tom Robbins, what are you doing? I don't understand the process.
We had to republish the, we had to republish the public hearing based upon a defect in the last notice for the public hearing. So, we're starting a fresh public hearing tonight based upon the new notice, and we're just eliminating the old one.
Detective.
Yep. So, here, with, with a motion and a second on the table, any discussion?
Sure.
Calling a vote?
Omen's aye.
Jack aye.
Demalia aye.
And the chair is aye, so we have closed the continued hearing from April 18th. So.
Can I make a motion to open up the new hearing?
We don't actually have to make a motion to open the new hearings, we can just do it, yeah. We need a motion to close and continue. So, now, I am calling to order the public hearing regarding the proposed agricultural accessory use bylaw. This meeting was, was noticed two separate days and two publications in the two weeks leading up to this meeting. I don't have the dates of the publication handy. So, with that said, the public hearing for the proposed bylaw is now in session. So, I would like to kick this off by, by running through a short proposal of where we're at, and what we, excuse me, a short presentation of where we're at and what we've done so far. I'll take questions from the board and the public afterwards. So, hopefully, this will come up and share. Yep.
Thank you.
Did you get share? Yeah, I definitely did share. It won't let you? I'm not sharing currently. Is there a dis? It says you're the meeting host. Can you move it off participants, or? There's nothing to move it off of. Mr. Chairman, I made multiple, multiple copies of this. Excellent. Well, while we're sorting this out, why don't you hand those out? Sorry, an error has occurred.
They're a little bigger than yours, text-wise, that is.
Hey, there we go. Alright, so, I wanted to walk through the process that went into this for the benefit of the board, the benefit of the public, and the benefit of the record. Just because this is, this is something that's been a long, multi-year process. It's not something that's just abruptly come up. This has been in process for over three years. So, this is going to talk about what we're doing. So, just to put a little bit of framework around this particular public hearing, because I believe we have a bunch of folks here for it. Already did the opening remarks, I'm going to talk about the process and the purpose of this. Then, we're going to talk about town council comments, get some public testimony and input. Then, obviously, questions from the board, even though it's not on the list. And then, we'll close the hearing, and if we choose so, we would vote to refer this to the town meeting more with a recommendation from the planning board, subject to whatever edits come out of the meeting. So, to talk about the road to get here so far. So, there's been a bunch of people who've worked on this over, over time. But, the lion's share of the work was done by a subcommittee that was requested by the planning board and the Economic Development Committee. The select board created that advisory committee. The advisory committee conducted research over, I think what turned into a couple of years of policy documents, similar bylaws from other towns. It developed a proposed bylaw, and it sent that to the planning board. And that was, that was probably about a year ago. And since it got to the planning board, the planning board, or excuse me, before it got to the planning board, Hubbardston received a grant from MRPC, who's our regional planning organization. And our regional planning organization also took a pass through, through the proposed bylaw as it was sent to the town. At this point, this was structured as a rural opportunity overlay, but it evolved as the process went on. So, once the proposal was sent to the select board, the Economic Development Committee, and the planning board, we engaged Places Associates as our consultant to help make sure what was going on with this bylaw was consistent with existing zoning bylaws in Hubbardston. We then conducted a public listening session where we had a, we had a full room. And we received about an hour and a half of testimony, in addition to some suggestions for improving the bylaw. We also received significant correspondence at that time that was taken into revising the bylaw to where it pretty much currently is. The, the initial legal review on this was done by town council. So, there's a new version that got handed out to everybody tonight, which essentially took into account all of the changes that were proposed by town council. Along with a simplification of the language around the definition of farm, because one of the things we got back quite a bit in feedback was those words are English, and I understand English, but I have no idea what these sentences mean. So, that's not a good place to come from with the bylaw. So, so we attempted to clear that up. Today, we're here for the public hearing, and this is required by law in order for the planning board to recommend it for the board. As discussed previously, this was, this was noticed on the website and in the paper circulation. I also think a email went out. It's been pretty heavily publicized. So, just to kick off about what we're talking about here, we're talking about agritourism. And agritourism is tourism that brings the public to a farm enterprise. It includes things like farm-related educational experiences, encourages the purchase of agricultural products, and is designed to enhance the agricultural viability of farm operations. Why encourage it? Some of the discussion that came out of the advisory committee, and came out of some of the other comments, is that agritourism, agritourism works well in the highly urbanized Northeast, because we are close to Boston and close to Worcester. There are sufficient marketing opportunities, and it's been identified in multiple surveys, and from a wave of public feedback, that the residents of Hubbardston would very much like to keep Hubbardston with the character that it has now. So, this bylaw is also intended to encourage keeping farmland and open space as farmland and open space by economically incentivizing folks to put it to use that keeps it those things. Here's just some numbers about what agritourism means. We also contemplated ecotourism and outdoor recreation in this bylaw. Agritourism being responsible travel to natural areas that considers, sustains the well-being of the local people, and involves interpretation and education. And outdoor recreation means things such as hunting, fishing, boating, hiking, trail running, mountain biking, snowmobiling, horseback riding, swimming, skiing, climbing, sailing, et cetera. All of those being considered passive uses, except maybe snowmobiling. So, why encourage it? Well, there's a big movement at the state level. There's been an expansion of the protections under Chapter 48, Section 3, that pretty broadly protect farming and farm-related activities. We've received feedback from the farms in our community that our zoning made it confusing when it was looked at in context of what was going on with the protections in, in the Davis Amendments. And there's also movement at the State House right now with Senate Bill 24169. Mr. Merrick, can you help me out, make sure I quote that right? But this, this Senate bill is expected, is moving out of committee and is expected to pass, and will broadly extend the same protections to ecotourism and agritourism as is currently extended to farms. But it doesn't do a great job clarifying what is agritourism and ecotourism. So, we would still be left with a lack of clarity between the state rules and what our local rules are. So, part of what we're doing is joining what's going on with that. The other part is, there's some pretty serious money for communities with, with outdoor recreation and ecotourism. This is from the State Office of Outdoor Recreation, that published numbers, subject to peer review, that 9.5 billion to the Massachusetts GDP was related to outdoor recreation and ecotourism, and that it supported 93,000 jobs in the state. So, ultimately, as I mentioned, we're trying to economically incentivize the keeping of open space as open space and the keeping of farms as farms. We'll come back, I'm sure we'll come back to the Senate bill. But, yeah, I think, but just some final comments on purpose. Encourage economic development and open space preservation, fitting of the town's rural character. Provide opportunities to Hubbardston farmers to supplement and diversify income. Provide opportunities to leverage the open space resources in Hubbardston, and encourage regional recreation, education, and shopping opportunities for residents of Worcester County and the general area. So, in the proposed bylaw, we have a list of use provisions. And these use provisions are designed, as I mentioned, to clarify what is a agriculture-related activity. And where appropriate, encourage ecotourism-related activities. The, the list is tiered based upon activities that we believe are covered by the statute. And then, also, activities that are relatively low impact. Those are handled by. And then also activities that are relatively low impact. Those are handled by right. Uh, there are some activities that are subject to land area restrictions, and then there are some activities that are subject to special permit. But that was the thinking behind those. The important thing to keep in context here, uh, and this has been discussed a few times, is that there's a gatekeeping provision that is built into this bylaw. So, uh, in order to get to the use provisions, a property needs to qualify as a farm as defined within the bylaw. And we're gonna talk pretty extensively about that definition tonight. So, uh, this will be made available to the public, uh, and put on our website shortly. Uh, there's also additional reading, um, which constitutes everything that, well, most of the things that the advisory, advisory committee looked at while preparing its recommendation to the planning board and the select board. Alright. So, with that, let's talk about, um, both the board prefer to jump right into the revised versions or talk about the, um, the comments from town council?
Why don't we go with the comments from town council first? Is that okay?
It works. It works for me. So, let me get that open here. Yes, yes, I can. Uh, so I know that's gonna be a little hard to see, but, um, it's ultimately just up there for the purpose of discussing town council's comments. Um, we'll come back to a detailed discussion about some of these individual items. Uh, once we get them. Alright, so, uh, the first comment from town council is, um, is based upon the inclusion of some items. Uh, I don't think she had yet read the whole document before making this comment. Uh, because many of these things that she suggests ends up appearing later on in the document. It's allowable uses. Where'd that just go? Alright, any, any questions from the board about town council's comments on the top part?
So, what did she say? I can't read it from here. Sorry, Kathy from one forty-three one, Spina Road.
Yep, uh, she had commented that, um, there was a comment about, uh, some of the struck-out language because she was confused, um, why there was struck-out language, uh, and there shouldn't have been. Uh, it was just left there from editing. Uh, that's what that particular comment is. So, moving into the next paragraph, there was just some, uh, a typo reference from town council. Twenty-five-two, town council had made a comment, chapter forty-eight, section three is not defined farm, it uses terms, commercial agriculture, which is correct. And in the new version that we'll look at tonight, that's hopefully been addressed. Uh, one of the things that town council did not hit on and is corrected in the version, the, the new version we're gonna go through tonight, is that the numbering scheme in this is really confusing. So, we, uh, we attempted to, to kind of resolve that and, uh, a big part of that is because Places Associates and myself use Word and the town uses Google Docs, and every time it gets passed between the two format, it gets lost. So, we'll have to think of some strategies to work better with that in the future. Uh, then we have some criticism of the definition of farm here. Yeah, uh, that didn't work out great. We'll talk about that with the new version. Uh, because that didn't make a lot of sense. We have, um, we have some comments on formatting and such. Uh, then we had some changes here related to permit procedures and authority. Uh, all of these were accepted, so we'll talk about them in detail when we get to the new version. Uh, the only other change that we made is that there was a provision down below that, um, that makes an applicant able to bypass a couple of the special permit requirements to, uh, hopefully expedite the process. And, uh, that language got moved up here, but we'll go into great detail on that. Uh, she added some detailed information about, uh, an appeal process, uh, all of which was just accepted in the new version. Um, this is the struck-out language that made her wonder why we had struck-out language, because this is a new bylaw and it didn't already exist, so it shouldn't. And that's just from all the versions that got passed around. Um, one of the things on the list for us to talk about tonight is she did flag this, um, this non-exempt language as being confusing and potentially unnecessary. So, we'll, uh, we'll come back to that. Uh, there was a comment about, um, saying that, uh, the way we wrote it, it would apply dimensional requirements of res- of the residential agricultural zone. Uh, but it should apply the requirements of the underlying zone. Because if something was in a different zone, then, um, yeah, it, it should follow those dimensional requirements. And just as a reminder for the benefit of the public, our zoning is a pyramid. And, uh, when you go up in the zoning chart, you also incorporate the uses of the lower, um, lower zones. Um, so, once again, there was some flagging here on the, uh, the non-exempt, whether or not that wording's necessary. Uh, there was a comment about the, uh, the parking requirement, and she proposed language for, um, for the number of vehicles. Um, the new version adopts that language. Um, she questioned the, um, the three hundred and fifty visitor number, um, as something that seems, uh, arbitrary, but as we've heard, um, pretty extensively in the listening session, it actually made a lot of sense. Um, because of, um, impact and parking and, uh, some of the other parking studies that we had discussed. And then, there's some more cleaning up of the language. Um, one of the changes that she suggested that we did roll back is she changed it to building inspector everywhere. We have a convention to call him the building commissioner, uh, and that's what he's called every other place in our bylaw. So, we would be taking a step backwards if we were to, um, make that change. So, the version that we passed out to everybody in the room does not have that. So, that's walking down the list of town council's comments on there. So, let's pull up the live version. Line, John. Sorry, for some reason, the version's not on my drive here.
Was this clean? The public hearing version clean?
Uh, there should, there should have been one on the drive that said clean and then Places.
I see it.
I saw it. See it?
It, it did say Places?
Right here.
Have it on a flash drive if you want.
Yeah, but it should say clean and then dash Places. Cause that's, um, that's the version.
Is that the other one that's not here?
I mean, that.
Did you receive it as an email? Can place it there?
Yes.
You can all see it?
There's, it's in our three oh nine email from Bill. Can forward it to you if you'd like?
Yeah, sure.
Have it on a flash drive if you need it.
Alright, so...
So, the version you're handing, you're handing out is different than the one from this morning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Stop copy. I was looking for it this morning.
We revised it at three o'clock to fifth minute.
Alright, so, let me just close these competing versions here, so we're not running out of on.
It's just what kills the trees.
You have no idea how many trees I killed.
I know. Now we're at the bottom here.
Just at the middle of the, uh, the sheets by the architect are three feet, four feet. The sheets in the center, we have to get it out. And a flash drive.
Thank you.
Alright, so...
Do we have to put it up on the drive or do?
It should, it's up on the screen and it should be on the drive if you see. I'm currently hosting it out of the drive, I think.
Out of five-one, twenty twenty-four?
Yeah. It should say clean dash Places.
Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through this, um, for members of the board. Uh, when you get to the section you wanna come back and discuss, uh, please say hold. For members of the public, um, please hold until we get to the end and we'll come back through. That way, we can, we can kind of run through some of this. And, Mr. Murray, if there's something that you see, please just let us know. Alright, so, this is the, uh, the active version. It's the version that everybody should have in their hand. It incorporates the changes from town council. Uh, and it also incorporates adjustments to the numbering to hopefully make them less confusing. Uh, other than that, the only substantive change is to the definition of farm. So, what we're proposing here is a new article twenty-five entitled, "A Accessory Rural Enterprise Regulation." Table of contents, section, there, section listing, twenty-five point one, purpose. Twenty-five point two, applicability and authority. Twenty-five point three, definitions. Twenty-five point four, farm procedures, authority. Uh, twenty-five point five, use provision. Twenty-five point six, appeals. Twenty-five point seven, several doors. Uh, twenty-five point one, consistent with the town, uh, purpose, consistent with the town's general bylaw, chapter, uh, thirty-one, right to farm, and general law, chapter forty-eight, section three of the zoning act. The purpose of this bylaw is to provide opportunities for the agricultural community to supplement their farm operation income by diversifying their operations to include accessory businesses and related activities that may combine agriculture, tourism, outdoor recreation, and other farm-related activities. This bylaw is enacted to provide economic incentives to keep agricultural land in uses active in the town of Hubbardston. Nothing herein is intended to limit any use protected by general law, chapter forty-eight, section three, as an agricultural or agritourism use. Uh, twenty-five point two, applicability and authority, authority, this regulation is adopted as allowed under MGL, chapter, um, uh, bill for consistency. Should that all just be GL or MGL? Do you know how it is in the rest of our zoning?
Should always say MGL.
Should probably say MGL.
Yeah.
Well, the previous ones should be modified.
Ah, what did it just do? Alright, this regulation is adopted as allowed under MGL, chapter forty-three B, Massachusetts Home Rule Amendment, applicability. This bylaw shall apply to any property meeting the definition of a farm as defined herein after as intended that the uses provided for herein are accessory to the principal use of a farm as herein after defined. Uh, twenty-five point three, definitions. Agricultural, agriculture and agricultural shall include farming in all of its branches. Uh, then the elements enlisted, production, cultivation, growing, and harvesting of any agricultural, aquacultural, floricultural, or horticultural commodities. Two, growing and harvesting of forest products. Three, keeping of livestock, including horses, poultry, swine, cattle, sheep, goats, and other domesticated animals. Four, keeping bees and, uh, ratty? Ratty?
Ratites.
Ratites? Emus, ostrich, ostriches, rias, and camelids, llamas, and alpacas. Uh, uses shall include food production or other agricultural production. And, uh, five, keeping of horses as commercial enterprise. These farming operations may include the following as primary or incidental uses. Preparation for marketing, agricultural support or processes related to any above uses, or storage and delivery of raw or manufactured products. Uh, agritourism and the bylaw B is defined as a range of uses, accessory to an agricultural use to promote agriculturally related educational, entertainment, historical, cultural, or recreational activities conducted on a farm that may include the public. Such uses include UPEC operations, uh, seminars or related, or classes related to agriculture, farmers' markets, or retail stores with agricultural food, craft, art, or similar products principally or wholly manufactured or grown on the site. C, living history farm recreates historical settings to simulate a specific pastime period. Visitors experience history firsthand through immersive and experiential encounters. Farm, meaning a farming oper- operation engaged in commercial agriculture or agricultural activities. Whether or not those activities are entitled to production under M- MGL, uh, chapter forty, section forty-eight, uh, section three, or meeting any of the following criteria. Uh, where the principal use of the land, uh, so this is the gatekeeping provision, where the principal use of the land is commercial agriculture as that term is used in M. How does it jump? Defined in... Oh, come on! As in MGL, chapter one twenty-eight, section one A, and, uh, referred to in MGL, chapter forty-eight, section three. Uh, property not engaged in commercial agriculture that is otherwise engaged in traditional agricultural activities shall be considered a farm for the purpose of this bylaw, provided that at least seventy-five percent of the acreage of the property is dedicated to traditional agricultural activities. And a farm may be leased by the property owner to another person or entity who engages in farm operations on said property and reconstrue a farm for the purpose of this bylaw. or entity who engages in farm operations on said property and reconstrue a farm for the purpose of this bylaw. The burden of proof as to the status of the farm shall be the applicant's responsibility. E, uh, just to pause for a moment because that's a big one for the board. Any, I'm sure we'll come back to discuss this, but does that draw a hold from anyone? Cause that's one of the big parts.
No.
Excellent. Farmers' market, a public market for the primary purpose of connecting and mutually benefiting Massachusetts farmers, communities, and consumers while promoting and selling products grown and raised by participating farmers. Farmers' markets must adhere to the minimum qualifications for Massachusetts farmers' markets as set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture. Non-exempt use, a land use that is not entitled to protection under, okay, let's not have a jump this time, MGL, chapter forty A, section three. Open space, undeveloped land or working lands that contain natural, scenic, ecological, cultural, hydrological, or geological values that preserve or enhance the rural pattern of land use and development of the town. H, seasonal butchering, provision of butchering for distinct periods of time to accompany the harvest of animals such as deer in the fall, fall slaughter of meat animals, or where the provision of this service does not exceed three consecutive months. Uh, twenty five point four, farm procedures, authority. The planning board shall act as the administrating, as the adminis- yeah.
Administering.
Administering authority for site plan review and special permit application review as may be required under this bylaw. Otherwise, for uses allowed by right and not requiring a special permit, the applicant shall request review of said use and advice from the building commissioner by applying to the building commissioner for the proposed use at least thirty days prior to commencing said use. Such application shall be on appli- on an application form developed for this purpose, and all application fees shall be paid for by the applicant. Upon receipt of such application, the building commissioner shall have thirty days thereafter to determine if such profo- proposed use is by right and therefore approved, or the building commissioner shall inform the applicant in writing that additional permitting shall be required. Failure of the building commissioner to act within thirty days of receipt of the application shall be deemed approval of the use. If additional permitting is required, the requirements noted herein shall be followed to make applications to the planning board. Uses requiring special permit shall apply to the planning board on the form provided. The requirements for application shall be as per Articles seven, special permit, and nine, site plan, respectively, of the Hubbardston zoning bylaws, with the exception of item nine point two F. An environmental and community impact analysis, analysis shall not be required for proposed uses allowable under the accessory rural enterprise bylaw. C, any person agreed by the determination of the building commissioner may appeal to the zoning board appeals in accordance with section twenty five point six of the bylaw. D, the dimension, uh, this is one of the changes from council. Uh, D, the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning of the district within which a farm is located within Article five, section five point one, shall apply to each use allowed by this bylaw. The applicant shall be responsible for, E, the applicant shall be responsible for obtaining any and all other necessary and applicable federal, state, and local permits and/or licenses as may be required prior to the issuance of any approval or permit required under this bylaw. Twenty five point five, use provisions. Uh, uses allowable by right, uh, allowable non-exempt agritourism uses shall include, but are not limited to the following. Uh, and I'd like to call a hold on, uh, the non-exempt wording there. Um, we'll come back and discuss that. Then for the list of uses, one, UPEC operations except for Christmas trees, two, educational and demonstrative tours, three, agricultural museums, four, living history farms, five, processing demonstrations, six, on-farm farmers' markets and roadside stands which must include in part the processing and packing of the agricultural output of the farm, including the operation of farmers' market or farm stand, including related signage. Five, making of wine, meat, cider, or beer, fermented alcoholic beverages, or distillery operations, including tours and tasting rooms where products are either grown or prepared on-site. Eight, ice cream and bakery facilities where products sold are either grown or prepared on-site. Nine, outdoor recreation, um, fishing, hunting, bird watching, horseback riding, game preserved natural features. Ten, art galleries or sculpture parks related to agricultural activities. Eleven, um, ac- aquaculture and product sales. Twelve, beekeeping and honey sales. Thirteen, agricultural stores as defined by twenty five point three A, five to seven. Fourteen, services directly supportive of agriculture. Agricultural consulting, farrier, saddle re-tack, equipment service or repair. Sale of agriculturally produced products. That seems like it should have had a number on it. Do you need to hold on number thirteen?
You got to correct those stores, the references, Ron.
Okay. And we need to fix the numbering after fourteen. Uh, greenhouses and nurseries for the raising of flowers and hu- horticultural products, including the sale of products grown on-site. Uh, sixteen, consuming agricultural food products, and seventeen, garden tours. B, allowable uses by right for agricultural uses exempt under general law chap-
MGL.
MGL. Chapter forty eight three, subject to the following. Uh, agritourism activities requiring larger lots shall be permitted use provided that the owner has no fewer than five acres on one or more contiguous parcels. Uh, open areas suitable for temp- this is one of the changes from council, two. Open areas suitable for temporary parking of vehicles as required under section five point three zoning bylaws or sufficient amount of space for off-street parking to accommodate the parking generated as determined by the building commissioner or planning board as applicable. We'll just put a hold on that, come back to. Um, three, open areas suitable for emergency vehicle access as determined by the fire chief or his designate, and no use allowed under this section shall have more than three hundred and fifty visitors, customers, or users at the site at any one time per day. C, allowable non-exempt uses requiring larger lots. Uh, but are include, but are not, I thought we changed that language. So, we'll hold on, hold on, C. Corn mazes, crop art-related activities, uh, tours and trail systems for walking, riding, skiing, biking, and other non-motorized trail uses. Exceptions include motorized wheelchairs or similar equipment reasonably necessary for ADI appliance, pedal assist electric bicycles capable of a maximum speed of not more than twenty miles per hour, vehicles necessary for the maintenance and operation of the use, or official vehicles for public safety patrols and rescue. Three, petting and feeding of farm animals. Four, hay rides. Five, cut your own Christmas trees. Six, special events, weddings, receptions, or private parties for commercial purpose where events are held less than four times per year or are expected to have a maximum capacity of less than three hundred and fifty attendees. Seven, concerts, festivals, or one-time specific events where-
Can we put a hold on six real quick?
Yep. And that's... So, that is... C...
And seven, yep.
C, six and seven? Eight, on-farm restaurants. B, allowable uses by special permit. The following uses require a site plan, submission of special permit application to the planning board, and may be granted for a farm of five contiguous acres or more. Any event-
That should have been D, not B. You went A, B.
You are correct.
Can I do that? B, yep.
Yeah, it's gonna make me look like I don't know how to use a computer if I try to fix that now.
Yeah.
I just tried to click on it and it was like, no, no, you can't change this.
Fix it later.
Um, allowable uses, good catch, allowable uses, and you know, like, three different people went through the numbering on this too. But, I mean, it's a ship of the thesis, there's a lot of, yeah.
Numbers and letters.
Yeah, there are.
You don't know what came from you, what program.
Right, no, bingo. B one, any event, function, operation, or business that will exceed three hundred and fifty attendees. Special events, weddings, receptions, or private parties for commercial purpose where events are held more than four times per year or are expected to have a maximum capacity of more than three hundred and fifty attendees. Concerts, festivals, or one-time specific events that are held more than four times per year or are expected to have a maximum capacity of more than three hundred and fifty attendees. Rural campgrounds, lodging, other than a bed and breakfast, which is already allowed by right. Uh, non-motorized active recreational uses, including, but not limited to, skulk, zip lines, golf, and seasonal butchering service of animals not raised on premise. And then we have the next C, which should actually be E. Um, so prohibited accessory uses. Uh, the following uses are strictly prohibited as they've been found to have an unsuitable environmental, found to have unsuitable environmental impacts, and are not consistent with the purpose of this bylaw. Slaughterhouse, the commercial slaughter of animals for food or for other purposes where such animals are not grown, raised, or produced on the property, and where such operation is non-seasonal. Fur-bearing animals, farms for the raising and production of fur-bearing species such as, uh, mink, ermine, rabbits, or other speci- uh, species dedicated to fur production only purposes. Uh, commercial composting or waste disposal using imported materials except for onsite manure management programs which are permitted. Twenty five point six, appeals. Appeals to any determination, permit, or condition issued by the build- building commissioner under the provisions of this bylaw shall be made to the Hubbardston Zoning Board of Appeals, who shall act on such appeals as prescribed in the Hubbardston zoning bylaws. Anyone agreed by special permit issue or denied by the planning board may appeal to a court of competent jurisdiction pursuant to M. GL, chapter forty A, section seventeen. Enforcement, twenty five point seven, enforcement of this bylaw and its conditions shall be by the building commissioner pursuant to section four point thirteen and four point fourteen of the zoning bylaws. Twenty five point eight, severability. If any provision of this bylaw is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of the bylaw shall not be affected thereby. The invalidity of any section or sections or parts of any section or sections of this bylaw shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the town Hubbardston zoning bylaw.
Good job.
That should be by laws, right? Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so that's what we have on the table. So, let's talk about the holds. And my reason for, for doing that first is because I think we'll likely talk about and work on some of the things that folks are here to comment about, so, uh, I think it'll be more efficient if we do it this way. Uh, so, Mr. Murray.
I saw that there's a typo, twenty five point four A.
Where is that at?
Twenty five point four A, permit procedures authority.
Twenty five point four A, correct.
Yep. Such application shall be on an application form developed by, for this purpose. We should strike the word by. Simple typo.
Yep, I, I did that as we were.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, you called out twenty five point five, use provisions, a non-exempt.
Alright, so, um, yeah, this one I'd like to talk about a little bit. So, one of Carolyn's comments is that the way we talk about non-exempt, um, is confusing. So, I'd just like to have a little bit of a conversation about that. I know that one of the challenges that we have with drafting here is some of these uses are currently covered by state law, some of them are about to be covered by state law. So, for those, we're ultimately just clarifying. But can you talk a little bit about what your, about what the, the drafting intent was with non-exempt?
And that, that came through from the original. So, I'm not a hundred percent sure what non-exempt means, if it's allowable by right. Other than if state law says it's exempt, why are, why are we addressing it?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, and, uh, recognizing Mark Kresge, uh, Mark actually did, uh, the first pass of drafting on this. So, uh, he's one of the original draftsmen.
Things like, things like, uh, farm stands are clearly exempt under forty A, section three. But in order to be so, they've got to conform to the definition of agriculture, which has all the revenue requirements associated with it. So, if we want to allow for operations that don't meet the state definition of a farm by revenue, then we called it out here as a non-exempt example of, you know, a use that would typically be exempt, but a particular operation might not meet the revenue criteria.
So, I have the definition of that with me. I can read it if you, if the book-
Uh, yeah, just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Kathy Hansgate, one forty-three Williamsville Road, also on the ag commission. Um, I recently attended a workshop presented by Frank Deluna, who is probably the premier lawyer that supports farming, and he was quoting the zoning, uh, definition from, um, section one A, chapter one twenty eight, and that definition, uh, zoning issues for facilities, facilities for sale seasonal, um, for the sale of agricultural products, quote, "Provided that either during the months of June, July, August, September, every year during harvest season, of the primary crop raised on land of the owner or lesssee, twenty-five percent of such products for sale based on either gross sales dollars or volume have been produced by the owner or the lesssee of the land on which the facility is located, and such land must be used for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture." Again, there's another further paragraph, and again, it's at least twenty-five percent of such products for sale based on either gross annual sales or annual volume have been produced by the owner or lesssee, and at least an additional fifty percent of such products for sale based on either gross annual sales or annual volume have been produced in Massachusetts on land, other than that on which the facility is located. For example, a farm store, used for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture. And that's right from the state law that he has written down there. That's where some of this is coming from. So that you under- have a better background as to why that was, Mark had brought that up. It's also, it's, so it's volume and or sales.
Alright, thank you. So, with, um, with one twenty eight being already directly included, is that language in, in the gatekeeping provision for farm, is that language still, is the non-exempt language still necessary in the use provision descriptions?
Well, it's, it's necessary if you wanna step beyond the definition of one twenty eight. If you wanna stick with the definition from one twenty eight, then no, it's not necessary.
I would suggest you remove the word.
Uh, Mr. Murray, do you have a comment?
Do you wanna deviate from the definitions as established by state law? Because we had a long conversation about that, and making the definition of a farm and farm uses, And making the definition of a farm and farm uses, especially with the legislature sticking their nose yet again into this field, unintended. It, it might get messy.
So the recommendation from the advisory committee was, um, was broad. So it was for including, um, what's defined under state law, uh, and then adding to it, which the, under D, so D one includes everything that's allowed under state law. And it also does it in a way that directly references the statutes which are gonna change.
Right.
So the pending bill references, um, forty-eight and, and one twenty-eight. So if it changes that, expands there, that will still get pulled in. So the gatekeeping provision won't be in conflict with state law there. So where we add to it is that D two. So it's getting, properties are getting proven defined as a farm there. So that's, and, and that's addressing the problem that was discussed pretty extensively at the advisory committee and pretty extensive at the, the public hearing. Not the public listening session. Is that ultimately the right time for this bylaw? This fifteen years ago. Because we've ended up in, in a place where we now have very few commercial farming enterprises. But we have a significant number of folks that are farming in retirement, farming as a second or third job, or gentleman farmers, where the underlying use of property is a farm and ultimately deserving of protection if we wanna conserve it as a farm or economically incentivize it to stay as a farm. So that's why the recommendation was to go broad on it, so to pull in both of them. So if we're pulling in farm and, and we're casting the wide net there.
Yeah.
Is that language necessary in the?
No.
All right, so I.
I bet you can delete it both definitions and in the, and in the body.
I agree.
Any comment from the board on, on that change?
I think the board captured it pretty well.
To a degree, yeah.
Okay, so we would, we would be suggesting that doesn't change. So, uh, when we get to comments, everybody please keep in mind that, that that's there. So the next is, next hold was B.
Twenty-five point five A thirteen, citation is incorrect.
And that's agricultural stores?
Yeah.
Why should the citation be there?
We don't currently have it defined, if you wanna refer to it, they're gonna have to define it.
What section is this in? Twenty-five point?
Uh, it's the agricultural stores, so it's twenty-five point five A thirteen.
Okay.
Yep, the citation, twenty-five three A five, twenty-five three A. How many babies? Doesn't it look like it?
I think it does.
Three A five is a keeping of courses.
Yeah. There is no.
Also is five to seven.
Right, and what's, it's.
I wonder, so.
Trying to do is five to I to triple I.
So this is a place where there was problems with the numbering?
Yeah.
Because in one version of the document, um, everything after five was six, seven, and so on and so forth. Even though they're really sub-points.
Correct, they're, they're supposed to apply to everything above.
So then the reference would actually be?
Five, not to seven, but to I to triple I.
Well, wouldn't it be a broader twenty-five three A? Because isn't that a continuation of paragraph twenty-five three A?
It certainly could. I mean, you're including all the uses of allowable by right as an agricultural store. An agricultural store.
I guess it would be.
Agricultural store is not defined by twenty-five three A, which this is a section of.
So what if?
So why don't we just say twenty agricultural stores, period?
Yeah.
I agree. I think the rec, the correct reference is twenty-five point five A. It's right above this statement. But having said that, I agree with the period F.
Uh, just name for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, Tom Robinson. Brigham Street. Brigham Street, sorry about my voice.
Does that make sense to the board?
Yep.
I think you just strike it.
Yeah.
Define it.
Okay.
It, it is definable in and of itself.
All right, so then.
Yeah, and the numbering after, in fourteen, right?
Right, the sale of agricultural produced products, the majority which produced on site.
Yeah, but I, I can't fix the numbering on this, so we're just gonna have to make a note to account for that in the.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause Google documents, yeah. So then after that.
D two, open areas suitable, temporary parking of vehicles as required on section five point three of the zoning bylaws.
Yep, and did you have any, did you have any comments on this one?
I do. I don't, I thought you put the hold on this one, huh?
I did, but I did it based upon the, the expression you were making. I mean, we've been working together a long time.
So the, the short, the short story here, I'll keep it short and sweet, is off-street pace, spaces are required to be paved under this citation.
And that was a huge problem for when we were having our meetings. Imagine a farm paving a whole field.
Well, it's also, uh, and station, for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, Katie Young.
We're trying to hold public comment for the end of it. With, with that said, yeah, that, that was a big problem at the committee.
With buffers and shade trees.
What if it just a, that first sentence is struck until a sufficient amount? So it would get, we would strike open areas suitable for temporary parking of vehicles as required under.
Actually, I would suggest, um, we go. Let's see. Because the design requirements, I don't know if you want me to read it all out, but the design requirements, one through six should apply. So one is the general layout, traffic circulation, and parking loading errors shall be designed so as to avoid unsafe conditions, traffic congestion, and the street punt which there is access, and to provide for the safety and adequacy of access for vehicles and pedestrians using the area. So we want that. Parking areas and spaces are to be designed for safe access and exit of vehicles. Parking areas have to be designed to prevent vehicles from backing onto roadways, uh, onto driveways or street. We want that. Any enclosed loading space shall be located thirty feet from any street. Any open space shall be designed that trucks when loading and, unloading or unloading will not project over any street line. Again, individual parking loading spaces, maneuvering areas, entrances, exits shall be suitably identified with lines and arrows as deemed necessary by the building inspector. That's reasonably applicable, I wouldn't want lines, but I would want parking assistance or something. Uh, no access drive aisle or maneuvering area shall have a turning radius less than twenty feet. So we get into, uh, where vehicles will be located adjacent to sidewalk fences, walls, required buffer strip, trees, landscaping, or similar constructions. A suitable bumper or curb shall be provided in a location that the vehicle cannot overhang or otherwise damage said obstruction. Not unreasonable, but I wouldn't want a curb.
Well, yeah, it's also starting to be to the point where we're talking about permanent structures for temporary events.
So seven is, uh, paving, eight is lighting, nine is shade trees. Parking areas with more than five spaces shall be bordered outside of the ten-foot white buffer street, which, uh, strip, which I don't think is applicable. Access drive shall be arranged for the free flow of vehicles, maneuvering aisles, designed so that vehicles must enter into a public street being driven in a forward direction. It's kinda covered in the very first one.
So what would your recommendation be for the reference there? Because this is.
Well, it's gonna get messy. Because the number of park, uh, five point three addresses the overall parking requirements.
Yep.
Open space and, um, so it would be. It would be five point three, sub-number B, number of spaces, and small d, one through six. So now we've got the number of parking spaces shall be reasonably provided per the zoning bylaw, and a very limited requirement for the design of a parking lot. I mean, my, my big problem with the bylaw was the, the parking and the adequacy of access egress and public safety.
Okay.
That covers it.
Well, uh, keep that handy, cause I'm sure that's gonna come up in public comments.
Okay.
Uh, does the, where, does that make sense to the board?
Yes. Your next hold is item C, allowable non-exempt agricultural uses required in larger lots. And I believe the, the comment is to strike non-exempt.
Yes.
Uh, the next is under C, items six and seven at the top of the table. So my comment on this, not Mark's. Uh, under six and seven, my question to the board is, is it and slash or? Or is it intended to be or? Is it, is it?
Is it intended to be and?
Or is it intended to be and? In other words, are you saying this condition and this condition must occur at the same time? Or are you saying one or the other must occur at the same time?
The recommendation added to the committee was that either one of those things was triggering of that?
Okay, so or is correct.
Where, yeah, if, if the event got either over a certain size or.
This or this.
Yeah. Okay.
This is an allowable section, you understand?
By right. So, so then there, in six and seven, it should be and. And then going down to the other section, it should be or. Yeah.
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 That makes sense.
Yep, so six and seven should be and, uh, any, any, uh.
And then you're gonna renumber, which I already did, D to B.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna modify two and three to be or. But.
No, they're okay, I see this.
Yeah, they're okay, that's, that's right.
Yeah. All right, so.
And prohibited uses will be E.
Yep, but, uh, anyone, let me change those in Google Documents.
That's it.
All right, so before we go to, to public comment, and we'll come back to the board. Um, but I do wanna ask the board, any questions from the board? For either places, associates, or, uh, or really Mark who helped write the official, uh, the recommendation out of the advisory committee? Any questions from the board? All right, so let's, um, let's turn this over for public comment. But let's take, let's take a, a five-minute recess before doing that. When everybody comes back, how many people would like to comment?
Somebody with the.
Yeah, let's face it, there's six. And there's some folks online.
It's waiting.
Okay, so we have seven people who wanna comment. So let's, let's try to keep those comments to three to four minutes. When we get back so that we can't be too late. And let's also talk about, um, let's also talk about what the rest of the agenda looks like. So the, the next public hearing is for battery energy storage systems, which is not going to be like this one. It's not gonna be a, um, parsing through every single word and then, um, uh, I mean, unless somebody turns it into it, I don't expect it to be, because it's not, it's a lot more perfunctory and it's really just an improvement on something we already passed and just failed the attorney general. So I don't expect that to be super long. But we also have, um, we also have the open space plan on our meeting for tonight. So how much time do you guys think you need? And how late are you willing to stay?
The open space group?
Uh, depends on the discussion, could be a long time.
Is this a, I'm, I'm gonna be that guy. Is this a posted meeting of the open space committee? And if not, how many members of the open space committee are in attendance this evening? It's my understanding that there's a quorum.
We have three.
No quorum.
There is no quorum.
Quorum is five. All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so you expect that it will take some time, and how later are you willing to stay until?
All night, it's just like ripping off like a band-aid.
We'll stay a while.
Okay. So you are committed. Uh, yep, just briefly.
Can we submit writing, comments and writing? And what's the deadline?
Um, well, needs, tonight our last night to make a recommendation to have it on the board.
Absolutely.
Yeah, tonight's our last night, uh, to decide.
Can't do it in three minutes.
Okay, well, we'll, um, we'll see how we go for time, uh, just try to keep it brief. So let's have that, let's have that five-minute recess and, uh, and then come back to, um, to the public hearing. So it's eight oh three, we're coming back at eight oh eight.
Okay.
How was your, uh, trip? The rest, right? Where'd you go? Sorry?
Thursday.
Really, so you were there while the, uh.
We're about to come back to order. All right, calling back to order, the meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board and calling out of recess the, uh, the public hearing on the, my brain's starting to cook, uh, proposed agriculture accessory use by law. We left off, uh, being ready to call for public comment, so, uh, just in the interest of being consistent with direction, let's start on this side of the room. So, um, do try to, uh, everyone who comments, please be sure to state your name, uh, and your address. Please try to address your comments to the board, uh, specifically the chair. If you have a question for our consultant, please try to ask it through the chair. We try to be pretty conversational here, but we do need to have some guardrails for formality. And try to limit your comments to around four minutes or so. Some people are gonna run short, some people are gonna run long. Some people, uh, might have some specific sections and provisions, so we'll go through it. For the most part, we're gonna listen to the comments where i- if there's a comment about a specific change, we'll discuss it at the board's discretion. Uh, so not everything is necessarily going to get a response, just in the interest of time. So with those ground rules started, let's start on that side of the gallery. So, public comments.
Uh, Mark Kreske, fifty-eight New Templeton Road. I'll apologize for being picky because I support the intent of this article. Um, I'm just trying to avoid problems down the road. Um, first off, are we talking about a regulation or a bylaw? Because typically regulations would not be going to town meeting.
That's a good point.
At any rate, we need, whichever it is, we need to be consistent. We, we refer to the name of this thing in the body. Um, and so whichever it's gonna be, I'll point it out in a moment. Uh, on the section list, in the current version, twenty-five point seven is enforcement, twenty-five point eight is separability. And I wanna skip down to twenty-five point five B. This is allowable uses by right for agricultural uses exempt under forty A, section three. So I, I take it the intent here is to impose, e- even though the use is basically exempt under state law, the intent here is to create some additional requirements that the town wants to impose.
What section are you on?
Twenty-five point five B. So I'm, I'm curious whether the board ever had discussions on whether any of, whether all these requirements that we're adding are expected to pass muster in terms of not being unreasonable regulation?
Chair, you're actually looking at E or D, not B. You're looking at the second B.
B as in by.
Your E's are gonna be the second B.
Ah, the second B.
Yes.
There you go.
Oh. All right, so let me start again.
Yeah.
So the first B is, we're, we're tacking on some requirements for uses that are exempt under forty A. Forty, forty A says the town can't unreasonably regulate these uses. I think all these, these things might pass muster under that standard. I, I was just curious whether you had any conversations about it? Well, I mean, it's a possibility. Uh, that's it for me.
Uh, just a comment on that last comment. It was reviewed and approved by town council. Expect it to, to pass attorney general review, but that is always a valid concern with our current attorney general's office.
Well, in general terms, the communities are allowed, you're not allowed to prohibit it, but you're allowed to further restrict or refine under zoning by law.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, the actual, the actual language is that you're not allowed to unreasonably regulate.
Yeah, right. Is a, a good point.
Wait for the end.
Moving on, okay. Uh, any further comments from those benches? Moving on to the next benches. Uh, starting, uh, starting from the middle of the room, any comment? So.
Will you go ahead?
Go ahead.
So I guess Kathy, you're up.
It's gonna go.
Tim, Tim Holly, thirty-five Mount Jefferson. Um, I'm just gonna go real quick through s- some of these technicalities. First page, twenty-five point two B, the last three words are redundant as their, those three words occur in this immediately preceding sentence. You know, I have to say as here and after defines voice. Uh, twenty-five point five use provisions A.
Uh, can you just hold for a moment? Uh, just because that's a simple change, uh, and objections on the board just making that change.
Yeah, sorry.
No. All right, continue please.
Twenty-five point five use provisions A. It says uses allowable by right, allowable, non exempt, et cetera, um, sections B, C, and D all begin with allowable uses, and I'm wondering if the words uses allowable by right at the beginning of that sentence, uh, or phrase is, uh, not supposed to be there. I think that's, I think A is allowable, non exempt, agrotour you, agrotourism uses shall include but not limited to in the list. Um.
Okay, just to hold on that one for a moment, uh, Mr. Murray, uh, what do you suggest for language trade? Because we did talk about pulling out the non exempt.
I, I agree there was a previous conversation where the uses allowable by right is confusing with the fact that you still have to go to the building inspector for permit. One implies that you're allowed to just do it, but the bylaw itself says, no, you, it's an allowed use, but you still need to go to the building inspector. So I don't know if Mr. Holly is saying get rid of by right, but I do think that that is an advisable thing to do. Allowable uses. Allowable.
Thank you, sir.
Agrotourism uses.
All the other points start with allowable, so the word allowable starts every other one except for A, which says use is allowable, so.
Okay, so we would, we would strike uses allowable by right.
You, you could say, do that and then you could say allow by right, non exempt.
Well, we're getting rid of non exempt.
Yeah.
But allowable agrotourism uses shall include, so we're being very specific to agrotourism here. And that's what the intent of that particular section is anyway, right?
So, this is a place where, um, where I also know we're gonna draw additional comment, um, so shall include but not limited to the following. Now, there's a couple of places where that appears in the document, um, I th- for this particular one, because some of these are exempt uses and some of these are defined under state law, uh, is this a place where we need to have the, um, include but not limited to? Again, some of the accessory uses are, are defined in the underlying statute. And, and using similar language where it's not an exhaustive list.
Right. And that's an acceptable limitation.
Yeah. Yeah, and in that particular spot, um, just while we're currently touching the language there, the, uh, does the rest of the board have any feelings on changing that so the language would be as you can't read on the screen, but it would say A allowable agri- agrotourism uses shall include but are not limited to the following?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
A lot of flattery. Well, and that, that should make it less likely to draw an objection from the attorney general, because where we get an objection from the attorney general on this is if she perceived a conflict with, uh, what's intended to be a very broad state law. And it also allows some flexibility in it, right? Uh, all right, Mr. Holly, did you have further?
Oh, yeah, oh. The, the next page where we go from number seven to number seventeen, in between fourteen and fifteen, I think there's one missing, a number.
Yep.
Yeah, there is.
Did you caught that?
Yeah, that's why I made a correction.
Um, sorry, under B, th- w- when it was talked about with the, the temporary parking is required under five point three. As I read that, it does not say that the parking must comply with section five point three. It says open area suitable for temporary parking. Uh, I don't know, does five three address temporary parking?
It does not.
Okay.
But it addresses the number of parking spaces and it addresses the requirements for the design of parking.
For, for temporary parking.
This, zoning by law doesn't address temporary parking.
Right, so, so I would submit that, um, on, on my farm, I better not have to comply with section five point three because I'm just gonna have temporary parking.
Discussion we had, and so as a consultant to the planning board, one of my big concerns is if you have two hundred and ninety-nine people and you decide to put them in a field that has a single means of egress with an eighteen-foot fireway and the fire department needs to get in there, you got two hundred and ninety-nine people or cars parked in a field, that's not good design and that's not safe. So the planning board or some entity should have the ability to say, you're not doing something that's advisable. So what we did discuss is refining, cause five point three under our zoning by law addresses permanent parking spaces, parking and loading, all the things that we normally require with commercial operation.
Yeah.
So we talked about the number of spaces being calculated in accordance with the zoning by law, because if you have two hundred and ninety-nine people, I don't know why I picked that number, you don't need two hundred and ninety-nine spaces, because there's more than, usually more than one person attending a, a function in a vehicle, but you do need to provide safe access, safe egress, a reasonable means for police and fire, handicapped people, turning radiuses, entering, exiting onto the roads. So my suggestion to the board was we refine five point three down, make it dumb, and only make it apply to the portions of the bylaw that would, that could apply to a temporary parking space.
So that would be B, D, the B and D one through six, right? All of B and D one through six, yes.
So D is just a short number of parking spaces and it says based on the uses. And then D, one through six, parking has to be safe, it has to, if you park in next to a wall, you're gonna have five feet off of the wall, police and fire have to be able to get into it, and turning radiuses and maneuvering spaces have to be provided. And striping or indication of where people have to park has to be approved by the building inspector.
With, with that said, the, the commenter, I think is correct with how that reads. Open area suitable for temporary parking of vehicles as required. Well, if section five three and if those references in five three don't actually specify temporary parking,
Okay.
then we're setting something up that's confusing and hard to comply with.
So you could say under the applicable provisions of section five point three, B, whatever, whatever my citation was before.
Yeah. Temporary parking of vehicles.
Just get rid of temporary, just say parking and then specify those specific sections.
Oh, I want temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need to get that in there.
But it's not a defined term. I mean, it's a term of common usage, so I don't think that's a problem.
Right. Temporary.
Yeah. Um, somebody helping with word, with words method here?
So open area suitable for, for temporary parking of vehicles pursuant to the requirements of section five point three. Gotta make my look this up.
B and D one through six.
Uh, it's, uh, five point three on E.
If I may, what, what you said earlier about your purpose for this section made a lot of sense.
B.
And it, I, I would think if you would just put that, forget about five three, that's for permanent commercial parking. If this section just said, uh, areas for temporary parking, um, must have adequate means of access for emergency vehicles, adequate means of entrance and egress. Just, just what you said a few minutes ago.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we could probably get rid of, number of spaces is kinda accommodated by sufficient amount of space, as determined by the building commissioner. So we could simply say temporary parking of vehicles complying with section five point three D one through six. And that's just real general standards for the design of parking, general layout, traffic circulation, safe access and egress, uh, enclosed loading space, which you won't have, but it has to be offset.
So then everything after bylaws gets deleted? Or, and until you get to as determined by the building commissioner of planning board?
Right. Complying with section five point three D one through six. Strike of the zoning bylaw, well, it is of the zoning bylaw, so.
Yeah. Alright, so that's why is this huge of all language, it's just impossible to read, so it's. I mean, it's still pretty impossible to read, but it's huge on my screen. Um, so yeah, that's the language that you had suggested, so open areas suitable for temporary parking of vehicles complying with five point three D and D one through six of the zoning bylaws.
It's just D.
Just D?
Just D, D sub one through six.
So D one through six of the zoning bylaws as determined by the building commissioner of planning board as applicable.
You, you're keeping of submission amount of space for after parking to accommodate, right?
No, I thought you just said to remove that.
No, we wanna keep that. The, well, what C is the number of spaces, or, or, uh.
B.
D is the number of parking spaces. But since it's temporary parking, does the planning board really want
Wait, okay.
to determine the number of parking spaces for fair? Or do you want the building commissioner to do that?
Yeah. Okay, so then we're leaving this as it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than the citation, five point three D one through six.
Yeah, you're gonna get rid of the B again?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. There we go. All right, numbers, phone?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Holly.
That's it. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Hanske?
Hi, Kathy Hanske, one forty three Williamsville Road. Um, going back to twenty five point three definitions, um, based on the zoning state definitions, um, growing and harvesting of forest products upon forest land. Uh, you left out dairying as a category. Um, and then it should say raising of livestock. And if you're doing raising of livestock and other domesticated animals, we don't have to define emus, ostriches, llamas, and alpacas. They are all considered lives- livestock.
So, ju- just to recap here, so you're suggesting for twenty five point three A to growing and harvesting of forest products on forest.
Of, upon forest land?
How's the board feel about that?
Um, and then add category dairying, cause it's nowhere is mentioned. Even though we don't have many dairy farmers around anymore, but could happen, could happen. And then this.
Where?
Can I cover that?
No.
No.
Not necessarily. Dairying is different.
So how about we just add dairying from forces?
Yeah, so the separate comma, add dairying.
Well, it caused me just the keeping of livestock including dairying. There's no I in that. There's no I in dairying. Thought there was. He's saying you're missing the I?
That's, that's right from the.
Oh, D A I?
Yeah.
D A I R Y I N G.
I think that's the first time in my life I've ever written that word. Well, which is ironic, because my father actually has a college degree in dairy farming, but I've never actually written the word dairy before.
And then if you're raised, the, the state definition is not keeping but raising of, and that's a little more definable, um, because anybody can have a cow or a chicken. Um, and if you're saying livestock and other domesticated animals, the, all those other ones that are listed, llamas, alpacas, they're, they are already livestock.
The thing we don't want is domesticated animals to be dogs, because that's a separate kennel use, regulated by the town.
So then you could say other domesticated animals, so, I don't know.
Well, the u- the word livestock, I think, kinda restricts it, I just want
Covers it off, yeah. Yeah.
Everybody be clear, the intent is not dogs, cause dogs are se- separately regulated.
Right.
Okay. We had added that in the revisions since the advisory committee to try to be more broad with it.
The domesticated animals?
No, uh, specifically adding the Bs and Emus and all of that stuff because.
What do you think you?
I can only just vote for camelids are livestock.
Is it okay?
Yeah. Um, I mean, are we at a point where that's popular enough usage where?
I like specificity.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're hurting anything by being extra specific about allowing it.
No. Yep.
Okay, I think we'll, uh, the board like to leave it as it is?
Yeah.
Sure.
Right, yeah.
Uh, further comment?
Is the keeping of livestock the same as the raising of livestock? The keeping, I buy a horse and I keep the horse, that's keeping a horse. Raising a horse is I buy a colt and I raise the, the colt to be a horse. I, I, I think it's semantics, to be honest with you.
True term.
Yeah, it is, but I'm, I'm just going off what they, the.
State law.
State law, sorry.
We should do what the state law says.
So they, they go with raising?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. That, that's the only reason I mention it, cause why, why, give us more headaches.
But you don't raise bees.
R A I, yeah.
Yes, you do.
We're gonna have the.
Nobody don't.
We're gonna have the same.
I'm a beekeeper.
Are, are we gonna have the same issue then with raising the re- retites and the camelids?
Well, they should probably be moved up into
It's up.
Uh, i- up into three.
Correct.
Okay. But, but not under the category of livestock is what you're saying?
They are livestock, yeah.
Okay, but specifically called out as such?
Yeah, including horses.
Gotcha.
Cheap goats, after goats should be emus, ostriches, rays, and llamas and alpacas. Avoid the fancy word.
Yep. Uh, well, I just filled it out. Get an extra over there. How did that? I think you, when you cut it, you didn't include the R. Yeah.
And where do you wanna put dairying?
It should be its own little line.
Kinda should.
Um.
I mean, it is food production, but.
It is. It's own business.
So now we kinda have this senten- this hanging sentence of uses shall include food production and other agricultural products. I guess that should move.
I remember if that was originally had its own numbered line again.
Could you combine it with beekeeping, dairying, uses shall include food production and other agricultural products?
Doesn't even need to be there.
It's a big catch.
Yeah, but that's, that we know for sure is straight up, uh, forty A, section three.
Hmm.
So I don't know that we even have to worry about that being a catch, so. I mean, it could also, it could also just be food production, well, no, food production doesn't mean agriculture automatically, because you'd be food manufacturing.
Does not, right.
Um. So that doesn't hurt any. So then that.
Well, you know.
That hanging sentence, I think, could just go.
Uses include a food production agricultural.
Yeah.
I think so too, because your I one through three refines it. You could, you could admit it, because you've still got it.
Okay, so.
In the above uses, primary incidental I, I one, I two, I three.
Mm-hmm, so we put all the animals together, added dairying.
It's the R.
Keeping bees is now its own line, now has and, we deleted that sentence, and keeping of horses as a commercial enterprise.
Where is dair- and you inserted dairying as five?
I, I mean, we could, I put dairying in with the list of animals. I mean, we could pull it down.
Dairying includes cows and goats, I think.
Wouldn't dairying be part of livestock anyways?
No, it's about the production of milk.
Yeah, well, balance defenders, we got it, so.
There you go.
Alright.
Um, sorry, can I have a couple, another minute?
No, continue.
Under two.
Sorry.
Twenty five point three under agritourism, we have, um, a few things listed, I don't have all the numbers. So it starts with retail stores with agricultural, food, craft, art, similar products principally or wholly manufactured, and I think, um, grown on site, state law, the zoning says annual vol- sales or volume has been produced in Massachusetts, on, on Massachusetts land. Not necessarily, in other words, if I wanna sell Joe Schmo's maple syrup, I'm not producing it, I'm reselling it.
Pursuant to MGL one twenty eight, chapter one A, uh, section one A.
So it would be retail stores with agricultural food, craft, art, or similar products, um, pursuant pursuant to, and what was the reference?
MGL one, C one twenty eight?
Yep.
Right.
Section one A.
Which already is defined below, right?
Right.
Because we have that in the, on the farm.
Yep.
Right, that, that would be appropriate.
But a. But a re- a re- a farm store is defined.
Yeah, so that's one twenty eight, section one.
Section one A.
You got it down below D one. MGL.
It's probably based on MGL.
Chapter one, sub- subsection one A. Yeah, cut, cut and paste, yeah, I like that. And if they change the definition, your bylaw goes with them.
Right.
Alright.
Um, under farm, there's a paragraph, uh, says a property not engaged in commercial agriculture that is otherwise engaged in traditional ag- activities shall be considered a farm, provided that at least seventy five percent of the acreage is dedicated. I don't like the number seventy five, I'm sorry. Uh. That doesn't work, that doesn't work for a lot of people.
I agree. I agree. And I get you'd be more than fifty percent.
Why is it a seventy five?
The reason that I have that concern is, we have a lot of swamp land, you can't use it for agriculture, maybe forestry, and I mean, you've got a beautiful house and a beautiful yard, and you've got a substantial field out there, but maybe not seventy five percent of your land is in agriculture, right?
That's correct. It's not.
So more than fifty percent?
Why is that seventy five percent?
Uh, because it came out of one of the preliminary versions of that Senate bill. That was the, the inspiration for that, um.
I agree with that, though.
Does the board agree, were you saying you agree with the seventy five or the fifty?
Fifty.
More than fifty.
How does the rest of the board feel about more than fifty?
You're right.
Opposition by him.
Looking at, well, Kathy has, and she has a, um, she's got a farm business, so that's seventy five percent, I agree with you.
Alright, so that's, uh, continue.
And.
Uh, that's still restrictive to some people who run small operations.
I agree.
Garlic farmers, they don't need much land.
So. So maybe that becomes a use or determination by special permit. If somebody, I've got a twelve acre farm and I've got two acres of field, but I still wanna call myself a farm. If I don't comply with this, then.
Well, it should go back to the, what the state definition of a farm is, not seventy five percent.
Yeah, this is trying to capture the small farm.
Well, it, it does go back to that, so if somebody is running a small commercial farm by land area, then they're pulled under that, um, that, uh, first element, they're pulled in under D one. So like if somebody had a very small but super profitable garlic farm.
Yeah.
Um, which is one of the examples we talked about, if it was an actual commercial enterprise, they get pulled in under one. So two, D two is the compromise to try to get folks that are deserving, but don't necessarily fall under the commercial agriculture. So, anybody who makes the state standard is in.
But if you put in that seventy five percent on the analysis, at least, it's not that big. We're trying to, we're trying to get people to do it, to restrict them.
Right, we had dropped it down to fifty percent, in conversation.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna keep it.
This, yeah, because the commercial folks are getting in already under D one.
Okay.
I mean, you, you already said it, but just to say it another way, uh, I mean, this, this is an or section, you only need to meet any one, any one of these conditions.
It's any, any of these here.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
It says and, not or.
Uh, well, that.
Meaning any of the following criteria.
Any of, any of the following criteria.
So if you meet one, you're in, you meet two, you're in, you meet three, you're in.
So if he, at the end of number two, maybe puts the and?
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So that should go.
So, yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
A lot of very careful measures.
That's good.
Happy Christmas.
So you don't need the, you don't need the or, because it's any of the following criteria?
Yeah. Strike it.
Strike it.
It's gone. Alright.
Um, under seasonal butchering, as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, you need to remove the word fall slaughter. You need to remove fall from slaughter of meat animals.
How about seasonal slaughter? Because like spring lambs.
Yeah, I think that should be seasonal slaughter.
But the section is called seasonal.
Yeah, so it's self referring.
You, you, yeah, you don't need to put seasonal.
Yeah, it does, just leave the word out, cause it's already s- under seasonal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, where it doesn't exceed three consecutive months, which is literally the definition of the season.
Right.
Well, then you can, you can get rid of in the fall next to deer as well.
Exactly.
Well, no, you can't, since you can't harvest deer any other time of the year.
Oh, hunting. Right, right.
Please don't.
So.
Okay, come on.
You can harvest broat.
Okay, so that makes sense, that's.
Broth killing. That's not slaughtering.
Alright, so.
Um, I still have a, a little confusion in my head, and maybe it's cause I'm tired.
Yeah.
Twenty five point four, permit procedures, section A.
Yep.
The second sentence. An applicant said use, is that for every farm? And every activity that I do is, that's agritouristy like? I, I, I think I'm not reading it right somehow, but. Are you saying that every activity I do, even if it's a small agritourism type activity, has to have a permit? That's kinda how I read it, but I might be reading it wrong.
Mr. Murray, what are your thoughts on that?
Yes, every activity.
Yeah.
That's listed here, requires. Yes, every activity, that's listed here, requires you go to the building commissioner.
Hell no.
Same here.
And the, uh, the, the logic behind that is, again, we had that conversation, is if you're doing something that requires the review and approval by the Board of Health, or another permitting agency, conservation commission, or selectmen, there should be some sort of entity that reviews that to make sure all those permits. Because you can't have two hundred people at an activity without a public water supply or a source of water supply and sanitary, you just can't do those kind of things. So small scale things, we don't exempt, probably need to specify, but, um.
I mean, this is a place where exempt or non-exempt matters, I think.
Right.
Because. It goes to the whole reasonable restriction under the state statute.
Right.
That for, for some, some of those outright uses, um. It's probably not a reasonable restriction to require.
I can tell you right now, I'm gonna violate it tomorrow.
It's not in effect.
I know, but that's.
Can't violate it.
That's, you know, that's the way it's written. If it, if, if this went into effect tomorrow, I'd be in violation. And that's not fair. Somehow it has to be worded differently.
Can I make one comment? Keith Pedro, one thirty Gardner Road. Um, I know the intent of this is to say we support farms. You're screwing farms over by overregulating.
I agree.
And plainly simple, it means that you won't be doing things, and you won't get businesses in here. They have other comments on how to changes, but just have to make that comment. Chris.
So, the, the intent was, as I recall, twenty-five point five A through, what we now say eighteen.
I mean.
Don't need to be reviewed by the building inspector, I mean, other than distillery and those kind of things, but as long as they are less than five acres and less than three hundred and fifty people.
So if they have less than three hundred and fifty people, do they have to go to the building, the planning board, if it can get a special permit?
Well, right now, we say that any, any use needs an application to the building inspector. Any illicit uses.
And that's not under the definition of farm by state law? I don't need the building inspector to tell me that.
All right, so how do we fix that language?
So what's a reasonable threshold for any use? Any activity of fifty people or less?
You have, uh, kids come on school bus on a school tour day, you could have fifty people in, in one bus. If the class decided to visit the farm.
One other word. One other thing that's mentioned in one line, but not in any others, with the three hundred fifty, uh, in one of the, um, twenty-five five B four, three hundred fifty visitors, customs or users at a site at any one time per day. And then in the later, uh, lines with the three hundred fifteen ten Bs, it does not use the at one time or per day words. It makes a difference.
Okay, well, let's focus on twenty-five four A, um, for the moment.
What's the threshold?
So. I mean, just, just looking at twenty-five five A.
Well, I guess, one way that I would phrase it is, what is the threshold under the state sanitary code for the provision of sanitary facilities? How many people? And it should be focused around the provision of safe water and safe sanitary. So if there's, there is a threshold under state law where X amount of people show up for whatever activity it is, you have to provide a portage on it, you have to provide a port of one, and I would think that that would be, that, that's state law, farms aren't exempt from it either.
Correct.
And I don't know what that number is, but, but I can get that citation.
What do you mean by safe water, drinking water?
So under the state sanitary code, if you, and I'll just pull a number out of the air. If you have fifty or more people, you must have at least one portage on, and you must provide suitable and safe water, drinking water.
Drinking water. But is that, is that, uh, concurrent, fifty people, or over a period of time? Meaning one person comes and leaves, one person comes and leaves, throughout the day, you get up to the fifty, that's right?
The, it, it is a.
So in Kathy's case.
It is a function.
Sorry?
A function.
What do you mean by that?
So, the state sanitary code says, if you have a function with X amount, number of people.
Oh, sorry, so there's a function where there's fifty. But that's concurrent people, being there concurrently.
Correct. You're saying you gotta buy everybody fifty people to be at the table there.
I would apply that. Yeah.
We've gotta have a bathroom.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you have a bus full of fifty kids, I would think you'd need a portage on.
Sure. But if you got a, if you got a car coming to Kathy's place and leaves, and another car comes, and she just have to do that?
Yeah. Uh, no, you, right.
No, that's, that's not true. If you go over to any orchard, uh, for instance, uh, Sholen Farms over in Leamster, they got porta potty, porta potties and water there all the time, 'cause people come and go. Because, because they can't, because they can't have people, because we have lots, lots of buses, I, I mean, I'm going to very specific cases, which we're trying to address here, is Kathy's case, right? For a very small outfit like yours, where you have.
One customer and a car.
One customer coming in and leaving, a car comes in, say for example, mom and, mom and two kids, they buy something from you, she doesn't have to have a porta potty, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, Sholen Farms is an example where they obviously have hundreds of people on site at a single.
Precisely, precisely, but in a case like what we're talking about here, it's something very different.
So let me bring up a mid-scale. Have anybody ever been to Bemis Farm with their classes? They have classes there on a regular basis, usually between twenty-five, fifty people, and then, but it's in a greenhouse, in their lands, and so there's still customers coming in and out. I don't recall ever seeing a porta potty anywhere, but there might be a bathroom somewhere, but the classes are usually pretty short. They're usually like a half hour, hour, you go in, you make your thing, you leave.
Yeah.
So, like, if it's under a certain amount, you still have customers coming in, where is that threshold that they would have to get some kind of?
It's, it's so.
Well, we're a little off subject, I'm still going back to the fact that needing a permit for any activity.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta find a threshold, is why I'm suggesting.
Well, the.
So, I'm surprised that, that that requirement on pretty much all of the uses for twenty-five five A didn't flag with town council as, as potentially an unreasonable restriction on agricultural uses by right. So I would, I would almost suggest that.
Because she's not a farmer.
That, that twenty-five five A really is by right.
Yep.
Because they, they are accessory uses, so that, that wouldn't be subject to, um, to commission review.
And the, it's not the planning board's job to enforce the Board of Health's regulations.
Yeah.
So if a farmer has a hundred and fifty people, and they don't have a portage on, they complain to the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Is this written so it, it can accommodate the small farmers and all that, or are we gonna make them get a permit?
That.
It's written they're gonna get a permit.
The way it is, they would have to get a permit, so.
I don't read that.
With, with the intent being that somebody should gatekeep somehow. But, because if you're.
You're gonna restrict my business.
True, but if you show up next, if you show up next to me, if you're the farm next to me, and you have two hundred and fifty people, which is less than three hundred and fifty people show up in a day,
No.
and it's.
You go to the town and complain to the building commissioner.
No question, yeah.
And then.
And he's gonna say, but they can do it by right.
But do they violate the state laws, when, uh, that you were stating earlier regarding the sanitary facilities requirements?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's come back to that in a second, uh, Tom.
Tom Robbins in Piggan Street. By right doesn't mean without regulation. By right means you can't be refused. So if I wanted, if I had a building lot with a approval not required, I have a right to build a house on it. But that doesn't mean I can build a house right up next to my neighbor's yard, or, uh, not Monstrosity, you're still all regulated. Now what you're doing is, if you wipe out the regulations, you say, oh, it doesn't apply, then, then you're running rudderless. You have no control at all. Don't do that.
We can't bury the farmers in paperwork either.
Yeah, that's right.
And cheese.
And fees.
How did, how does Rutland deal with this?
Because we're saying at the whole beginning of this, we're trying to help people do this, but if we're gonna force people to come in and get permits and pay things, paperwork, then.
Yeah.
I'm sure that the building inspector will not be happy with this here.
No, no.
Got some questions on this? We had no comment. Um, yeah, let's take this.
Quick one. Um. Keith Pedro, thirty Gardner Road, um, some of you have probably been to my farm, and some of you have probably done Country Roads Christmas tour at my farm. We open up around nine in the morning. Over the course of the day, we may have more than X number of people that come to our front. Are you going to get, have you get a permit each day during the Christmas season? I mean, it, uh, again, I, I understand what we're, that's, but I'm just raising a point, on any one given day, I may find out that I had fifty-one people, and I should've run back downtown and said, sorry, I, I owe you another fifty bucks on the seventy-five dollars I made today.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
It, it. If you look at the town, and if you look at the parking, and if you look at the roads, there is hmm, that. Very few properties that fit into what we're trying to do here. I probably don't, and there'll be a force of sin.
All right, so.
So.
Rutland, uh, the way they looked at this, and is the closest, closest analogous bylaw, is, um, the planning board shall act as the administering, uh, authority for site plan review required under this bylaw. Site plan review requirements may be found in the document titled Site Plan Approval Regulations as Amended. Otherwise, for new first time agricultural accessory uses believed to be allowed as of right and not requiring site plan review, the applicant may request a review of said use and advice from the building commissioner in consultation with the agricultural commission. Um, and then this doesn't apply, 'cause we don't have a planning or community development office, by notifying the building commissioner of the as of right use at least thirty days prior to commencing said use believed to be allowed as of right by this bylaw.
So you're still gonna make an application, there's just no fee?
But it says you may request a review, it doesn't say you have to. Yeah.
That's right.
And this did clear the attorney's level.
And that will remove all the restrictions that they're worried about. Right?
Yeah. Uh, Tom?
I've watched a lot of people put a lot of work into this, and I respect them very much, and I respect the small farmers, and I think I will promote it, I will promote them, but this law doesn't really help them. We have an agricultural, chapter thirty-one, we have an agricultural law already on the books, and it's general bylaw. We have the adoption of forty-eight, section three, in that bylaw, and we have the adoption of one twenty-eight, section one A, in that bylaw. These bylaws are already on the books. We then turn to the zoning bylaws, and in section four, we find in any residential district, agriculture, conservation of open space, agriculture, horticulture, floriculture, viticulture, nurseries, orchards, sale of farm nursery or orchard products which are used on the premises, accessory uses on the same lot, public and private nonprofit education, museums, home occupations, guest houses, bed and breakfasts, accessory dwelling units, all by right in residential district, and I'll remind you, the residential district is the whole town, with very small exceptions. Use permitted by right in the town center reads the same list. Use permitted by right in the commercial districts, same list plus. So, I'm not sure why we're gonna tangle up our small business people with this bylaw. I, I gotta be the person that says, I don't think it's necessary. If it is necessary, and you find some uses in the bylaw that are not presently, or some uses in the proposed bylaw that are not presently in the, what I'll call the real bylaw, add them in. Make a revision. Then you're protected by enforcement laws and, and, uh, all, all the time proven wording, you don't have to invent something. And in summary, this law clobbers the little person and helps the big person. There are some provisions here that allow somebody to come in, and, um, I'm old enough to use this analogy. Have a woodstock. Hey, my colleague over here. Because you don't limit anything. Normally, a bylaw would say, up to fifty people, you do this, up to a hundred people, you do that, up to two hundred people, you do this, more than five hundred people, no go. What you've done is said, three hundred and fifty, you do this, more than three hundred and fifty, you can do any damn thing you want. It's wide open. There's no restriction. So, I think, and it's true in many other places too, where, where it'll say, you can do A, B, C, and D, but you're not limited to it, which means the list can go on forever, and a person can come in and do anything they want. The other bylaws, the ones that we really have on the books already, they use a very interesting phrase. They limit, they list exactly what can be done, and much of it includes exactly what you're doing now, and that's why you're not operating outside the law. But they say, anything that's not listed, any use not specifically listed in these zoning bylaws shall be deemed to be prohibited. That's why you gotta really do your job, you gotta really sharpen the pencil, and say what you wanna do, and what don't you wanna do. But a concert with a couple hundred thousand people is a movie long. Tom, can I keep you under three minutes?
All right, I gotta be honest, I'm, I'm spent on this. Um, I don't think anything more productive is gonna come out of this tonight, um.
On this one.
Uh. There's, there's no proposed language that I think isn't gonna create an issue here, and this is something that has to pass by a two-thirds majority. Uh, so. I'm tempted to say that this is dead for this year. Uh, I don't know if anybody else feels differently. Um. But, but that seems to be the reality of the situation that we're in.
Hearing their concerns is really concerning myself, and I think of anybody else, 'cause this is supposed to help people, not to hinder them. Um, if I'm hearing from them, this is gonna hurt them. I think we should really relook at it. Maybe, maybe we did too much, maybe we went the wrong way, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how to take everyone, so, but I don't wanna hurt anybody, that's my biggest intention, so.
I think that's.
I'm not gonna take any more comment.
I, if I may, I, I think generally speaking, the intention of this bylaw is, is, is admirable. I think the area that we're getting stuck and twisted in is this permit procedure authority that, that, that's really causing a lot of tension from individuals who are in, uh, in our audience right now. I think that area needs to be, needs to be revisited, and we need to better tune that. I would agree with you that this is probably not ready for prime time. And it's lamentable, because we've had hearings. And probably things like this were surfaced, it's just that it was because the bylaw was still evolving, we could not really point to it. Now that we have a final version, it can be pointed to. I think that, had this been the hearing, we would have had the right time, amount of time to correct it and to come up with something that is amiable to the community that this is supposed to, to help.
Mr. Chair, I just, uh, point of procedure, I do think it's unfair that Ms. Freiberg was never called upon yet she had her hand up on due to her virtual nature.
Yeah, uh, sorry, sorry about that. I, I do agree with that point of order. Uh, Ms. Freiberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna make a suggestion, and, uh, that is if we might be able to, as we, uh, start to further engage with our residents, if we can come up with a, a permanent title for this bylaw. I think there's a little bit of confusion, myself included. I've gotten some emails that have had the verbiage or the words, um, rural. Others have said agricultural accessory use, and others have, uh, used the word zoning. And I think as we further engage with our residents, we might wanna kind of fine-tune that, so there's no confusion as we move forward.
Well, thank you for your comment. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing with no action? Hearing a first, do we have a second?
A second, yes.
Hearing a first and a second, any discussion? Calling a vote.
Woman's eye.
Duck eye.
Malley eye.
Are you right?
The chair is eye. The public hearing is closed with no action and no recommendation.
It's lamentable. You guys have put a lot of effort and a lot of good work.
That's neither here nor there.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. So moving forward on the agenda, uh, I'm calling to order the public hearing for, uh... I'm calling together, calling to order, uh, please, please take discussions outside. Uh, I'm calling.
Nice job, Tom.
Back to order, uh... The, uh, the public hearing for Article twenty-three, this is a continued public hearing from Novem, uh, excuse me, from April eighteenth. Uh, this is a similar situation to the other bylaw, uh, where, uh, where we did have a hearing on this. Publication was defective. So, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to, uh, to close this public hearing, um, on the proposed battery energy storage system bylaw.
I make that motion?
Due to procedural defects.
Due to procedural defect that we close this, uh, this hearing.
All right. Hearing a first and a second, any discussion? Calling a vote.
Woman's eye.
Duck eye.
Malley eye.
Are you right?
And the chair is eye. The continued hearing is adjourned. So now, uh, I am calling to order the new public hearing for the proposed battery energy storage system bylaw. Uh, this is a bylaw that is back in front of us because we had actually proposed it two years ago, and the Attorney General's Office rejected it. Uh, and the reason they rejected it was because there were some cases that had happened, uh, that expanded some of the protections afforded to solar facilities under the Davis Amendment to battery energy storage systems. Um, it was determined that our proposed bylaw was overly restrictive, um... And it was rejected. So, we're here where we are now today. So, let me pull open, uh, actually, there were some comments on this from KP Law. Um, let me pull those up.
Wasn't it not only rejected, it was blue penciled so that everything was allowed?
Yes, it was. Um, yeah, uh, it, it is, the way it is currently on the books is that battery energy storage systems are allowed by right in every district. No restriction or site plan review.
Which is why we're bringing this back up.
Which is why it's important for us to bring this back up. Yes, thank you. Um, so let me pull this one up.
Is it, are we open right now?
Uh, yeah, we're in the.
So, let me ask you this. Ba- battery en- energy storage systems have to have a solar field.
No.
No, they don't.
They don't, okay.
They do not.
They can do, they can take a redout to store it.
Yeah, they, they can be stand, yeah.
They can be, they can be independently put in a location without a alternative energy source. Take, take energy directly from the grid.
Okay.
All right, so what we have here is, uh, a proposed Article, uh, twenty-three, which would replace the disallowed Article twenty-three. Um, it's based, uh, roughly on the language that came from Carva, Carver, which was approved by the Attorney General's Office. Um, we have some notes from Town Council on this. Uh, there weren't a ton of them. She generally found it fairly acceptable. Um, most of them are changes, um...
I see she has a question right after that. Uh, Mr. Chair, regarding the, um, battery technologies listed above but having less than the stated kilowatt hour limit allowed by right to.
Yes. Uh, th- there.
So, so you answered that already?
Yep, there's a, there's a version where that's accepted, and.
Yeah, gotcha.
We'll go to that after we go through Town Council's comments here.
Okay.
Uh, so Town Council recommended pulling out the language of, uh, all permits, so on and so forth, because it's redundant with what's in there. Um, we don't have minor site plans in our bylaws, so that reference, she, she spotted that, and that was removed because that had come from Carder, uh, from Carver. And then there's some other changes there, and we'll pull out the, uh, the live version to, to roll down. But this is, um, this has been available to the planning board in, in the drive. Um, there are, she has a question, how is an applicant, um, able to guarantee that ground vegetation won't transmit fire, but uh, that passed in Carver, so, uh, we'll get there now. Uh, and then this had a similar comment about the dimensional requirements of underlying zone instead of specifically referencing. So, any questions or comments from the board of any of Town Council's feedback? Yeah. So then, let's switch over to, to the live version and to the version that's on the table. Okay, just need to close a bunch of stuff to find it.
So can we take the clean version that is on, uh, the drive and?
Yeah.
Because it has comments, but the comments have already been.
I just accidentally logged myself out of the meeting. Can you share it while I try to get that up?
The clean version?
Yeah.
The clean version is the one that has her comments, so.
Uh, her comments are still in the margin, but all the changes are accepted, so, yeah.
Yeah. They were accepted. Okay, so what do you want me to?
Yeah. Uh, just share it up.
Share it?
Um.
I don't.
Actually, you know what?
Do you wanna take a quick break?
I need a five-minute recess.
That's fine. While you're doing that, you want me to present it, or, or do you want me to put it up?
Uh, yeah, 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 present it.
Present it?
Yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
I, I, I need, I need technical help, I have never done that.
Okay.
You don't have to present it.
So I won't be able to.
So, we're five-minute recess, so we're resuming at nine twenty.
Yes, uh, I need to do that with Mr. Nate Wright.
Yep.
Hey Nate?
Are you in the meeting? I don't even see you up.
No, I, I guess I need to join the meeting in order to be able to present.
Yep.
Can you sh- can you send me the, uh, can you kindly send me the, the link to this meeting?
It's on the, it's on my page. Go to the homepage.
Okay. Yeah. The meeting prowler.
I'm right there, I'll go let you in.
Thank you. I need to put myself here, right?
Yeah. So once again, we're in recess, coming back at nine twenty.
Okay, I guess I can end there now. Hey, great.
I got back into it. Okay.
Is that big enough?
Yep.
Whatever, whatever changes were made is to try and address Carolyn's, uh, comment. I don't think you achieved what you were trying to do.
You mean regarding the, uh, the, the ones that are less than this here? As to whether or not they are considered by, by right?
The other, the other, the other, the other battery, the other battery technologies that are listed here, yeah.
Yeah. So, typically, anything that is considered to be at home is what, I think those would, would, would imply ones that they, like the Tesla batteries or the, or the batteries that you have for your home to provide you with energy during off-hours, um, when your solar panels are no longer absorbing.
Well, those, those will be covered under the lithium ion.
Pardon?
So, uh, uh, power walls covered under the lithium ion technology?
Currently they are, yes, absolutely.
It's the last bullet point that I'm questioning. Well, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
But the last bullet point is, I think, particularly problematic.
Do you have specific examples that you, that come to mind?
What you, what you're saying in that last bullet point is that if somebody comes up with an innovative technology that's not listed here and wants to put in a one megawatt hour facility, it's allowed by right anywhere in the town and not subject to this by, by law.
Well, it is already.
I hope that.
I believe, I believe that all.
Oh, recess. Yeah, all right, calling back to order from the recess. Um... So, yeah, so we have the, uh, the clean version here that's up on the screen, um...
How do you wanna do this here?
I mean.
So we don't have the topics that we have handed out?
Uh, Francois would, would.
You'd like me to read?
Could you do me the honor and walk us through this?
Do you want me to read it?
If, if you would be willing to.
It's easy.
Oh, no, can't we find it? Well, walk us through it. We don't necessarily have to.
No, I, I, I think it's easier because, let's walk through, let's, let's talk about this here. Article twenty-three is the battery energy stor- storage system, really truly intended for, uh, the large, larger commercial uh, battery energy storage systems that are not the ones for, uh, residential use. Article twenty-three starts to see if the town will vote for the amendment of the zoning bylaw by adding a new Article twenty-three, which is the battery energy storage system, as follows, or take any action related here to. Section twenty-three has the following areas. I'm just gonna go directly into them. Uh, first one is the purpose. The purpose of this section is to advance and protect the public health, safety, welfare, and the quality of life by creating regulations for the installation and use of battery energy storage systems with the following objectives. One of one is to provide a regulatory scheme for location construction and the operation of battery energy storage systems consistent with best practices and safety protocols. One two is to ensure compatible land uses in the vicinity of the areas affected by the battery energy storage systems and to mitigate any potential impacts on the budding and nearby properties. And, one three, mitigate the impacts of battery energy storage systems on environmental resources such as agricultural lands, forest, wildlife, floodlands, water supply, and other natural resources. The section shall be construed to be consistent with state law, including but not limited to the to the provisions of the general laws, chapter forty-eight. Do we need to put, uh, MGL here?
Um...
Like we did in the other ones?
I mean, it, yeah, it probably should just be MGL and, uh, general laws.
Okay, so we'll make, we'll, we'll make those changes, okay. Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section three, and state regulations including but not limited to the provisions of the state building code, state fire code, and state electrical code. In the event of any conflict between the provisions of this section and the provisions of the state law or regulations, the state law and regulations shall prevail, shall prevail. Item two, capability, two point one, the requirements of this bylaw shall apply to battery energy storage systems. Be assessed, permitted, installed, decommissioned, or modified after the effective date of this bylaw, excluding general maintenance and repair. Best subject to this bylaw are only those that exceed the following capabilities, uh, capacities, I should say. Lead acid with a capacity of greater than seventy kilowatt hour, nickel with a capacity greater than seventy kilowatt hour, lithium ion with a capacity greater than thirty kilowatt hour, sodium nickel chloride with a capacity of greater than twenty kilo- lithium ion with a capacity greater than thirty kilowatt hour, sodium nickel chloride with a capacity of greater than twenty kilowatt hour, flow with a capacity of greater than twenty kilowatt hour. Other battery uh battery technologies with a capacity of greater than ten kilowatt hours best does that other battery technologies with a capacity of greater than ten kilowatt hour best that do not meet the threshold capabilities above are not subject to this bylaw and are allowed by right in all zoning districts.
So hold for a moment. That was a place where there was a comment from town council and yes, it is the intent to to make everything that is below the threshold allowable by right because that covers.
Say say that again, please?
Um there was a a comment from town council asking are battery technologies uh listed above but having less than the stated uh kilowatt hour limit allowed by right to?
So but this one basically, and I think this co- addresses eventually the comment that 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 you have. So he ha- he has a hold uh right on the on this one. So we'll we'll take that one. Can you mark the holds for me, please?
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. So this will be a hold on the last under applicability, two point one, the last uh indebted item.
I mean, we've reviewed this bylaw extensively many times. Do we need to read through the entire bylaw?
Uh well, what's uh what's the will of the board?
I I would say let's look at the changes or anything specific from from town council, but I don't think we need to read through every line of this bylaw that we've reviewed ten fifteen times.
Okay. I did it mostly for the purpose of those who, no, no, I I for the purpose of the audience here, should they have any particular set of questions.
Oh, do I totally change?
I'm willing to just forego the reading of this here, knowing full well that you probably have all read it, should have all read it. And and as as do I. Uh is is there anything from the audience that might pique your interest or would you like to address anything specifically? And I know that you have a particular question regarding the applicability.
I I have nothing I have nothing beyond that applicability.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience here and anybody that I cannot see in the back? Right. So so I I i- is is there any comment, any questions, any concerns that you would like to uh address here as part of the discussion, put a hold or do something? No.
So.
Mr. Chair, would we would you like to proceed and work with the audience's questions?
Uh yeah, sure. That that makes sense. Uh I I do have a hold for that two point one.
Yeah, so let's review review that.
For the other other battery technologies?
Yeah, I agree with that one, yeah.
The applicability? Okay. Did you have a separate hold to the one?
Nope, nope, the one we talked about. I I agree with that one.
Okay. Any other holds?
Uh Mister Murray?
I'm just, I would like to talk about the decommissioning.
Okay, so we have the we have one from him. Anything else that you would like to put a hold on? If you don't mind, Bill, uh what I'd like to do is is I'd like to go with the first one first, which is uh the the applicability, which is earlier,
Of course.
and then we'll go down to the decommissioning. So Mark, would you care to state your name and?
Yeah, Mark Crowes gave you fifty eight, New Templeton. Um I've got two com- general comments on, well, one general comment, one specific, I guess. Um I'm I'm sure these threshold storage values have some technical basis. I just I find them surprisingly low. Um you're you're saying that anybody who wants to store um wants a battery system in their house that stores more than one to two days of typical power usage is subject to site plan review. I I would have expected to see the threshold somewhat higher than that. Um but the specific question I have is under the last bullet point of two point one, uh one that was, I gather, rephrased to to address council's question about it.
Other battery technologies.
So let me read that one out loud again. Other battery technologies with capacity of greater than ten kilowatt hour best that do not meet the threshold cap- capacities above are not subject to this bylaw and are allowed by right in all zoning districts.
Okay, so it's a it's another bi- other better technology, o- other battery technology. So it's not gonna meet any of the thresholds above, cause those are all for specific technologies, other technologies. So it's not it's kinda not gonna meet any of those. So.
Well, it's threshold capacities, so it's just a kilowatt hour. And the way I would look at this.
But they're associated with technologies.
That is true, yes. So.
And this is gonna be another technology, some mythical new development.
Mm-hmm.
So this new mythical new development that's greater than ten kilowatt hour storage is not subject to this bylaw and is allowed by right in all zoning districts at any at any storage size. As long as you're more than ten kilowatt hours. If you're less than ten less than ten kilowatt hours, uh then you're not allowed, I guess.
So.
So.
So I think I see what you're saying. So it should it should have a ceiling on it.
Right. Didn't is this what town council put put right? No, I think hers is separate.
I mean, that's a good point.
Yeah, cause if it's some new element they use, it doesn't apply to any of the upper limits, so it would have no upper limit.
I'm just going back to look at what.
Carver, Carver, whatever.
The original language is. Yeah, this is.
Is this straight out of Carver's?
Yeah, this this is literally the only example that I was able to put my hands on um that went through the attorney general's office.
Then I would say for now we leave it to Band-Aid this and close the wide open, do whatever you want by law. But it's gonna be hard to change it later if we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but at least at least we'll have something plugging the gate and hole.
No.
Right.
Yeah, that.
Cause right right now, anything anything goes.
Oh, you're right. Right, anything, anything at all.
Yeah. It's the Wild West right now. I mean, this we we can't let perfect get in the way of good enough on this one. We have to let something go.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
So amendments are certainly envisioned in the future.
Right.
Yeah, and I I guess we could just of greater than ten kilowatts, but less than uh whatever it is that triggers tier two point five megawatt. Well, yeah, I guess I guess that's what it should be. Other battery we we could just do um other battery technologies with a capacity of greater than ten kilowatt hour best that do not meet the threshold capacities above.
So I I I I hear what I hear what you're saying, and I think that the 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 sections below where it says a battery energy storage system that is subject to this bylaw is classified as tier one, tier two, or tier three. Tier one are battery energy storage systems have a gr- aggregate energy capacity less than half a megawatt. Tier two are between half a megawatt to one megawatt, and tier three are one megab- watt or higher.
T- technically.
So any new technology that is above ten kilowatt would as as long as long as it as long as it hits, as long as it stays below the half a megawatt would not would not be included in any of these tiers.
We have to.
As soon as it is in.
Well, the the tiers don't matter, cause you you've you've already said that it's not subject to the bylaw.
Right. Right, if you're saying it's not subject to the bylaw, we have to put in the half a megawatt in that.
And that I think is wrong. That that I agree with you. I think that is wrong.
Yeah.
We have to put that in the law.
But why?
And I think exactly.
Yeah.
But why are you saying greater than ten? Why why aren't you just say less than?
So. Yeah.
Okay, so and that's right.
Right, that's an excellent point there.
Probably should be better better word than uh.
Just say less less than half a megawatt there is what it should say.
That would be more sensible.
And can you get a half a megawatt for a house? That's pretty tiny.
Yeah.
No.
No, but then but this at least puts it puts a limit and gets it through through the attorney general.
Yeah.
No.
Right.
No, I mean, you could you could even you could say something like
Yeah, for now. Less, cause Mark's points valid about some of those numbers being low. That's not something we have time to reevaluate right now.
than a hundred kilowatt hour or something.
At this at this point in time, you can
Which is kinda where I was.
At this point in time, you can get megawatt systems that are the size of a washing machine.
Really?
Yes.
A megawatt.
Yes. One uh one megawatt that are the size of washing machines.
Yeah, because tier one battery energy storage systems are already allowed by right in all zoning districts.
A lot.
So. So, yeah, so it so, yeah, just saying less than.
Less than half a megawatt.
A half a megawatt.
So I I would say that that makes a lot more sense.
Okay, so less than than point five uh.
M W H. And I think you have to say zero point five to be consistent with the other spots in the bylaw.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's not it's not necessary to say do not meet the threshold capacities above, cause it clearly doesn't.
That's a very good catch. That's excellent. Thank you.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So this this I think takes care of the item that you had.
Okay, unless you wanna continue your threshold.
No, no.
I think that's another base conversation.
So that satisfies that. Are there any other items that you wanted to discuss here? Should we go to your decommissioning?
Well, I'm looking at three point four, all access road shall be at least twelve feet wide construction on all weather surface to be cleared of obstructions on both sides by at least two feet. So I do a whole lot of site design and the NFPA standard, so it's the National Fire Protection Association, says that sixteen feet is the minimum width for a fire response vehicle. If you have a driveway more than a hundred feet long or a circuitous, they want a minimum of sixteen feet.
So three point three, according to what you say, based on the standards, in the first line, should not be twelve feet wide, but should be sixteen feet wide.
Cause that that's the width that allows a fire truck to pass another fire truck or.
That allows a uh ladder truck to put as any ladder truck or any truck without rigs
Slade stand, okay.
to be to station themselves anywhere along the road. It also allows a fire truck to go up the road and another vehicle to come the other way.
And pass.
And and barely pass, yeah.
Well, it it does say a sixteen foot there uh oh, yeah, vertical.
Vertical clearance, it's not horizontal.
Yeah.
And also says the gate below has to be at least twelve feet. Is that okay?
Yeah, gates are okay, cause they don't bother the fire department much.
The gates, yeah. Well, it could go through.
I mean, that.
Yes, they do.
And they're down there.
That sounds like a pretty reasonable change.
But we have put a big gate and then we'll have to go through.
Yeah.
I think sixteen's good there.
So the idea here is to make the change on the very first line, which brings it from twelve feet to sixteen feet wide.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Will you make that change?
Yep, doing it right now.
And decommission.
Yeah, I know I know what the answer to the statement that I'm gonna make is, but I'm still gonna make it. So on the decommissioning of solar fields, my office has encouraged
Should we go to that section and read what we have?
Five thirteen, we're talking about.
Uh for.
Right here, the decommissioning plan.
I have decommissioning as five thirteen.
Yeah.
Five thirteen, the
Oh, okay.
Decommissioning plan.
Yeah, so under the solar fields, I my office has recommended to the planning board consistently that we not allow them to take a deduct for the recyclable value of the components of the solar field, because we don't know
The value of it in the future.
what that market will be in the future.
That's a good point.
And there's no question that batteries have very much recyclable content. But whenever they submit these plans, the value of that thing is like gold.
Yeah.
And it truly isn't, because the value of recycling a battery only comes after you disassemble the battery, which is no small deal.
Right.
So we've always recommended to the planning board that you do you limit anyway the value of recyclable materials to, we say zero on solar fields. This is gonna be a glut in solar fields and another fifteen on solar panels in fifteen years. On batteries, I think maybe half the recyclable value shall be applied for the de- decommissioning. If you know what I'm saying.
Is there a particular section that you're looking to here?
Well Yeah, we don't we don't have language referencing that in here. We're proposing we add language.
Okay. So this will be under s- under five thirteen?
Is my my concern about adding language is right now it is uh
Clean acceptable?
Yeah, it's acceptable to town council and likely to go through attorney general.
It would be five thirteen, one point three.
One point three. Yeah, cause right now it's just the estimated decommissioning costs and how set estimate was determined, because we we can always reject.
So the other way you can do it is you can put it in your regulations, not in the bylaw.
Yeah, because it's the the bond amount has to be, or rather, the
That's a good point.
the fund amount has to be satisfactory to the planning board and town council. So.
Yeah, so in the past, you've requested cash fund, but state law lets them do three different mechanisms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I I think we should just leave it open ended as.
I leave it. I leave it.
Okay.
Do you have any other thoughts?
No, I I do appreciate the thought, but um I don't think we should add restrictions to it because they're taking a hard, hard look at what constitutes a reasonable restriction.
This gets the foot in the door and then down the road, okay, the changes.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, yeah. But you can do it internally with regulation as opposed to a bylaw.
Okay.
Bylaws authorize the creation of a regulation.
Any additional comments? Anybody else?
No.
No.
Mister Chair, I hand it back to you.
Okay, so I think there was one formatting error where we actually removed the definition section, but didn't remove it from the table of comments at the top. Uh because all of these terms are actually already defined elsewhere, so there wasn't a need to define them in the bylaw.
Mm-hmm. So section number two has to be removed from the table contents and you gotta read them.
So. Yeah, so. Yeah, remove section two and fix numbering.
Okay.
Um maybe just put that in as a comment. Um all right, any additional comment from the public or from the board?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, so if somebody remind me the.
I can, I'll close closing shot. I'll just re- remind you of
Yep.
in applicability, how it reads right now is that novel novel new technologies are good with no review up to five hundred kilowatt hours.
Yeah.
But the known technologies top out at seventy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. For now.
Yep. Um okay, so any additional comment from the public or from the board? All right, so if somebody refresh me on the order, do we vote to recommend in the public hearing or do we close the public hearing first?
I think we close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing.
Close the public first.
No, then we take a vote.
Okay, so uh would somebody like to make a motion?
I wanna make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that motion.
All right, here in a first and a second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Uh calling the vote?
Holman's eye.
Dak eye.
Danaya eye.
Stag eye.
And the chair is eye. Uh it is the public hearing is closed and we're no longer accepting new evidence related to this. So with that said, would somebody like to make a motion for the planning board to recommend um the proposed battery energy storage system by law as um as proposed with amendments from the meeting as discussed?
So moves.
Right, here in a first and a second, any discussion?
I'll flip it though.
Hearing, no discussion, calling the vote.
Stag eye.
Holman's eye.
Dak eye.
Danaya eye.
And the chair is eye. We have recommended it to um to the select board for inclusion on the board and uh recommend it as the planning board.
Okay.
All right, so we have some of the most patient open.
Yep, you have the input just.
We have some of the most patient open space people in the world um who who thought that we were gonna go at like eight o'clock, but we're gonna abbreviate what we were gonna do on the agenda. Um so if uh if somebody from open space would like to come up and comment briefly um the the plan as we have it now is going to be, uh the planning board should take one more look at the
Yeah.
at the open space plan and uh submit questions uh directly to the uh the open space committee regarding the open space and recreation plan. It's available to everybody in the drive. I've had the opportunity to read it in detail a few times at this point. Um I Um, I guess one one topic that I would just like to to make sure that we have out there is um
We'll pay your voices. Right.
Uh, I think we need to talk more in the future about how we can make the open space plan and the master plan and some of our initiatives work together, especially given the failure of the earlier bylaw, because we have an opportunity to look at some of the areas in town and consider some of the trail elements that we have part of the infrastructure, and infrastructure is ultimately what you base zoning around. Um, there's examples from other towns where they've rail trails, where they've actually used the rail trail as a destination point to to set their long-term zoning around. And we do have the same thing here, uh, way out on the end of uh Williamsville Road, so.
Yep. Um, so just relative, so you want some comments just relative to the overall open space plan?
Yep, and what you'd like to hear back from the planning board, please.
What we'd like to hear back from the planning board? Whatever you wanna say.
Yep.
Uh, Bob Hatch, uh, chair of the open space committee, forty nine Root Road. Um, the uh, the open space plan, uh, just, uh, I guess it's not a real short answer to that. Our focus uh in on the plan is to, uh, let me see if I get my thoughts a little bit more collected here. Uh, the function of the open space plan is we uh have uh i- uh implemented, coordinated, what we do on a regular basis is we take care of, maintain the the trails in the town. We uh look to uh amend and look for opportunities to expand the utilization and the connectivity. A major focus within the uh state and even in the country right now is interconnectivity uh with open space lands uh for both e- echo purposes as well as trail purposes. From a trails perspective, we have the opportunity, and what we're looking at right now is to connect what we've got in the uh state forest area and the Mount Jeff area, where the majority of our trails are, there's probably ten to twelve miles of trail uh between the Mount Jeff, Malone Road, uh, and the state forest. Um, we'd like to be able to connect over to the rail trail uh right next to the Burnshirt River. If you can connect over to that, you can go north for a long, long distance. Get up to New York if you want to. Uh, if we connect to that, we can go to the south uh down to past Barry Falls Dam area that's on the west side of the connect of the uh Burnshirt River and the Ware River. That'll get you down to one twenty-two and well beyond that. Uh, there's a new section of trails that is in Barry, but we've been active in uh helping get it connected. Uh, uh, at the top of uh Williamsville Road, right behind uh essentially Ladybug Farm, there's something called the Rice property. The Rice family came from Barry. And then down at the other end of that, uh, is the Butts Route sixty-two, there's a Reese property. So there's a Reese connection and a Rice connection. We just uh got through connecting uh a loop of trails down there. We wanna be able to interconnect that. That's a both a historic area as well as a a beautiful trail system to ride. So that's that's in a nutshell a little bit, and we do a lot more than that. Uh, relative to documentation, uh, we've got a grant. I guess that would be a good highlight for what's been going on. Uh, yeah, most of our trail system, because of the structure of Hobbitson, a lot of hills and valleys and water and whatnot, the uh uh, we have been uh uh thinking about working on trying to get an all-persons trail uh going. Uh, that would be good for a very wide group uh population of people. Uh, Malone Road is the best opportunity for that, and so we've got a couple people, Mark, uh, and Tim Holly, Mike Kreske and Tim Holly, that have done quite a bit of work elevation-wise out there. So we can make a trail that goes from the Malone Road parking lot out to the Dotty Rock. I don't know if you folks are familiar with the trail, but out to the Dotty Rock Overlook, which is at a very high point and overlooks uh Mount Wachusett and Church Steeple, et cetera. Really pretty spot, and then back again. And so we've got a grant uh to in process to through Mass Trails to implement that. Uh, and then we have one other uh portion of a grant from Mass Trails. Uh, it's a safety aspect. Uh, the Ware River rail trail, uh, as it intersects Williamsville Road uh just west of the intersection of Williamsville and Burnshirt Road is a pretty dangerous spot, so we've got a flashing beacon uh grant that we've uh submitted as well to c- to do that. That would be human activated. Um, so-
Can I ask what that means?
What's that?
Can I ask what that means?
Which part of it? Human activated?
Yeah, y- that at 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 the beacon. I'm kind of curious. I'm not familiar with that.
Um, uh, so it'd be a flashing light, so go ahead, Mark. Do you wanna do it?
The flashing yellow lights out here for pedestrian crossings?
Oh, okay, but at on the trail itself?
Same same thing, but on a trail.
Uh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, just uh just having the beacon, I think, is, never mind from the crossing standpoint, but just from an awareness.
I see.
Uh, I think, well, I lived in town for years before I realized that there was a rail trail right there that takes you all the way down to the Mass Central Rail Trail, and that from there you theoretically can get to New York if you just make a couple quick connections.
Mm-hmm. The millions.
And that it's it's just, it is a totally underused resource in this town from just a resource standpoint, from a planning standpoint, from an economic development standpoint. And and the fact that we're able to make this kind of progress with a group of volunteers is really pretty tremendous.
Yeah.
So I'm, uh, this for for what's been a particularly challenging meeting, I'm very happy that we're we're closing with something that really is this positive and this much of an opportunity. And I know some of it gets lost in in the details, because a lot of, a lot of this trail planning work is it's looking at maps, it's working through boring stuff, but the the real tangible impact that could have on us as a community, um, it can't be overstated. There's really good published peer review work on the economic impact of trail development. Um, so with with that, and in the interest of time, um, I would like uh everybody to take one more pass at the uh the open space plan and submit comments to uh to myself and Bob. Um, I've read through it a bunch of times and gotten to submit comments a bunch of times. So, um, uh, I've definitely put a bit of a planning perspective on 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 the comments already, but um, as I mentioned earlier, what I think needs to, what's important for us to do in our work and what's important for open space to do is we need to establish some kind of more formal relationship. Um, and I don't know if that's like swapping a a delegate or or something like that, or maybe just having like a scheduled, like, chair meeting or something. Because there's, as we all saw tonight, it is very challenging to do things related to economic development sometimes.
Mm.
Uh, but we can all get behind trails. And, um, God, I hope we all can get behind trails. So, uh, with that, uh, was there was there any other specific comment that you were looking for from the planning board other than general comments?
No, just the just the general comments, that's fine, if you have anything to-
It will have to be in writing.
Okay.
I mean, it can be any format you desire. I I I sent it out. I sent it out as a form that you can fill out in as a fillable P F PDF
Could you be a Google?
or you can preform it.
Right. So I'll uh I'll resend that to to everybody. Well, uh-
Yeah. Just 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 a general comment. You guys have done an amazing job putting this document together. I mean, it's not always comprehensive, but it's incredibly informational. Things that I have never ever known are are actually in here. And what I really appreciate is the fact that you have some amazing graphs at the very end, which really contrasts all of the components that come together for 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 the resources that that are basically under the per- under your purview. So, great job.
Good, thank you. Uh, I'm really proud of this committee. This is a a great group of people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Uh, did have you shared the uh comments that Bob sent that when we were asked to review the sections of the master plan that were the-
I have not sent those yet, because a couple of the other committees are late getting back to us on the master plan, so that deadline's getting expanded out.
Okay.
But I very much-
It might be, well, it might be helpful when uh you folks review the uh open space plan again to
Yep.
to have those comments available, because there's some discrepancies, I guess you would say
Okay.
uh, between the two documents with respect to open space.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you guys very much. I really do appreciate, I really do appreciate the work that you do, and I appreciate
Thank you for staying.
appreciate your stay.
Good.
Again, I appreciate having I know that you. Uh, so, do we have-
You as well, Christopher.
Uh, I'm sorry, Whitney, what was that?
I ju- I said you as well, Christopher.
Uh-
Having in the back.
So let's, do we have, do we have the invoices that are here in the drive?
Yeah, they are in the drive.
All right, can we get some motions on those, starting with five four nine one oh four?
I'll make a motion that we pay invoice five four nine one oh four.
Oh, yeah. Here in a first and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Nope.
Yep.
I say aye.
Calling a vote?
Holman's aye.
Dak aye.
Demali aye.
And the chair is aye.
I make a motion to approve. I make a motion that we pay invoice five six six four for the Horizon Cell Tower two, places and associates.
Hearing a first, do we have a second? Any discussion? Calling a vote?
Holman's aye.
Dak aye.
Demali aye.
Monroe aye, and Steiger?
Aye.
Uh, it's aye.
Make third motion, make a motion, we approve and pay the invoice, five four six four oh six to Hobbitson South Storage Two, places and associates.
I'll make the second.
Hearing a first and a second. Any discussion?
The only discussion I have with regards to that one was uh the funding for that. We do have that already, right, in in escrow to debate for that?
Uh, we should, but would you take a friendly amendment to make that one subject to uh
Subjecting the funds.
Subject to a fund.
The reason I'm asking that one is is because that one is probably one of the oldest ones that we have. It's it's at least a couple of years old, and I just wanna make sure that we have.
Yeah, I I think Patricia might be working with them for funds, and so-
Right.
Okay, yeah, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with uh with the friendly amendment, any further discussion? Calling a vote?
Holman's aye.
Dak aye.
Demali aye.
Steiger aye.
And the chair is aye. That motion is approved. All right, any matters not anticipated by chair, other than half of everything that's happened tonight? All right, so uh any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda? All right, how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Non-debatable, calling a vote?
Holman's aye.
Dak aye.
Demali aye.
Steiger aye.
And the chair is aye. We are adjourned.